I was told that the NCTM studio.
Where is that?
NCTV studio?
It's on Main Street in the Little Plaza.
Can we start?
Look at that brown pizza across from the library.
Okay. Calling the school committee meeting of April 4th, 2023 to order. We will begin this meeting as we do all of our meetings by reading the mission statement of the Norfolk Public Schools. The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Roll call, please.
Lisa Sheldon.
Sarah Ward.
Shannon Meneses.
Jennifer Nguyen.
Madora Champagne.
Ingrid Lardini.
Victoria Sladana.
Mary Nacto.
All right. So as always, first on our agenda this evening is public comment. I don't believe we've had anybody express an interest, but looking into the audience, I don't see anyone expressing an interest, so we will move past public comment and into correspondence, of which we have none. So look at that, two items off the agenda already. Next, we move on to the school committee chair report, which will be brief as we are just going to review a generous donation to the school gift fund. So we are, thanks. I got it. Thank you. If you refer to exhibit one in your packet, you will see school gift fund activity. The sixth grade promotion fund is giving us $1,500 as a class of 2022 gift designated to FK. So we would be looking for a motion to accept the $1,500 gift from the sixth grade promotion committee or fund. So moved. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes with thanks from a grateful committee. Moving on to Ingrid's portion of the evening, which is robust.
So our first presentation tonight, we have AI3 here to do an update for the committee on the status of the feasibility study. They're going to review some additional work that was done, the results of the traffic study, as well as the cost analysis. So I'm going to turn it over to AI3, and we'll just have you just check the mic to make sure that they can hear you.
Good evening, everyone. Can you, can you hear me? Maybe. You all set? Okay. So good evening, everyone. Again, Justin with AI3. Handful of additional attendees. We have Dave Potter and Derek Hug from PAR. They'll speak about site utilities, traffic, all that other good stuff. And then Troy Randall from AI3 is also here. So, quick update. We'll do a schedule overview. We'll update everybody on the community forum. That occurred a couple of weeks ago. I'm not sure if anybody has seen it online, but we'll do a quick update of that. We'll talk utilities and stormwater. We'll talk traffic report. The all-important, or the all sort of unknown of the night is cost estimate, I'm sure is on everybody's mind, and then next steps. What is the next step within the process? So. Doing this again. All right. Schedule update. So same schedule that we've been tracking all along. Basically, we're graying out everything that has been completed. We are here tonight, April 4th, school committee meeting, and then we have a handful of additional working group meetings coming up. We'll talk about this at the very end, but the next sort of scheduled meeting is community forum number two. It's currently scheduled for April 27th, as previously discussed. So a quick update on community forum. Over on the right is the actual agenda and the items that were discussed. So it was talked about, the project history and timeline, the whole process of how the town got to where they are now. Mike Perillo was there to talk about the educational programming and the enrollment projections. We talked about the facility educational analysis. We talked the floor plans, the site plan, and then turned it over to questions and comments. There was approximately 20 or so individuals or participants from the community that intended in person, which was, which was a good turnout, and there was a lot of really good questions. I would say that probably 45 minutes to close to an hour worth of questions. A lot of those were based on the project history and timeline, just did you look at this, did you think of that? And the superintendent answered all of those thoroughly. Everybody seemed like they fully understood that the due diligence was done by the district to answer all those questions. So overall, very positive and a very good outcome. So we'll talk about it at the very end, but next steps, community forum two. What is being presented? What is the proper timeline? So. So, real quick, I'm going to spend about 10 seconds on this slide before turning it over to PAR. If you recall from the last school committee meeting, Ashley talked about the updated site plan. It was a little bit, it was this version, but a little bit rough, sort of sketching of parking and stuff. This is the cleaned-up version. That is taking the information from the previous rounds, cleaning it up for presentation. This is what was showed at the community forum, and this is what is moving forward. Again, utilizing the place space adjacent to the new, the new wing over here, updating the courtyard, the site circulation for the pre-K component, the parking spaces, the outdoor classrooms. So this is just a refined version of what was previously presented. So with that, I'm actually going to turn it over to Dave to talk utilities, septic, site service, all that other good stuff. Should work.
We'll see if it works. Hi. Dave Potter from PAR, civil engineer for the project. So what I'll do today is walk you through the existing utilities and then talk about the proposed utilities. So what I have on the screen now is a plan from the original building design. This is the site utility plan. You can see the, the existing building shown here. That's where we are now. North is up. We've got, we've got the exit drive to the southwest here. We've got a field and a bunch of other lines representing underground utilities. In red, we've overlaid the, the proposed building footprint from the previous site plan to give you an idea of what area that encompasses of the, of these utilities. So within the, the project area, you've got a water line. There is a water line that loops around the entire school building and will have to be relocated outside of the building footprint for the project. There is also a lot of storm drainage within the project area that needs to be relocated. There is piping, and then there's also the stormwater, we call them best management practices. So there are, these blocks here are underground infiltration systems. There are 24-inch diameter pipes all rowed and stacked together in rows, backfill with crushed stone, and those take stormwater and send it into the ground. And then we've got two bio retention areas, one here and one, one here. In addition to that, we've got trunk lines, drain lines that bring all that runoff to the southwest corner of the site where they go out to, I believe it's Geneva Street. There's a paper street there, and it goes to the next roadway over. The whole site here, this area is generally about four, maybe five feet lower than the finished floor of this building that we're, we're in now. Gas is outside of our area, so that's, that's a positive. That's not something we'll have to relocate. We also have some, some electric that right now appears to be feeding the, the site lighting that goes around that ring road. So here's a plan that shows, we built upon Ashley's landscape site plan, and we are showing the proposed relocation of those utilities. So we've got in blue our water going around the facility. We're planning to relocate that generally within the new roadway. The new drainage line, which will connect to the existing system at the north end of our, our project boundary and bring it around to the, to the southern end. And then in red, we're showing a placeholder for some electric. In addition to the lines, we have to, we have to replicate the storage volumes that are lost by putting in this addition. And so we have identified a few areas in green here, which will be new best management practices. So we've got a bio retention area and a landscape island over here to the southwest. We've got a reduced bio retention area that Ashley might have talked about last time. And then we have an underground infiltration system that we will propose within that parking area. We have a good separation, a good, a low water table here. We've got good soils, so we're expecting that that would be something we'll, we'll look at in the next phase of the design, but we all, all signs are indicating that that will be the, will be acceptable. We haven't sized these. We will keep working with the size of these, so they might grow, they might shrink, depending on, on how the, the project unfolds. The other thing is the, the stormwater runoff from the new impervious areas. So with this project, we're actually adding impervious area, so we'll have to treat that as well. So these, these areas incorporate not only replicating what you're taking out, but also what you need to manage the stormwater from the, the impervious area that you're adding. And then I wanted to talk a little about sanitary sewer. So the sanitary sewer, the wastewater from this building is directed to an underground, to a septic system. There's a, a series of manholes and piping on the east side of the building that convey all your wastewater to a, a series of tanks and at the southeast corner of that structure. Then from that tank, those tanks, they go to an existing dosing chamber, and the pumps send it out to a leaching field, which is underneath your parking area. So underneath the, the southern limit of the parking area, you have all these, these chambers here. It's a pressure distribution system. It's all pipe and stone. You have, you know, again, like I mentioned, you have good soils here, so you have a very good, you had a good, very good perk rate with the facility, which keeps your footprint small, makes it a pretty efficient, a pretty efficient system, and you've got a good separation of groundwater, which also works in my favor. For the proposed addition, we're, we're looking at putting in a new tank and at the southern end of the, of the developed area here. It's going to be very difficult to tie into the existing plumbing system through the building and, and utilize the existing tanks. And, and so we're targeting putting in a tank system here and then a lift station to bring everything over to the existing dosing chamber. And then the leaching area itself would have to be expanded. So the, the existing design flow for this existing system is around 5,600 gallons per day, and that was based on 700 students and staff total. But with the new addition, you'd be exceeding that number. And I think it's about eight gallons per day per, per person. So you would be adding another probably 1,100, 1,150 gallons per day, and that's the reason you need to expand your leaching area. So we would, this is a blow up of the southeastern portion of the parking area where that underground leaching area is, and you can see where, we're hoping we could put on a few, a few additional rows and just build off that field. And we think, you know, with that flow, five rows would do it. This will all be explored further as we get into the next stage of design. Any questions on utilities?
I'm wondering, at what point do you deal with the town in terms of the planning? Do you have to deal with the inspector, the building inspector and the planning board? Because we're pretty notorious for being sticklers. Like, do you have a Plan B? I would anticipate it. I mean, hopefully, everything will be perfect, but do you do involve them, right? Because I'm nervous that if you wait until, not that you, you're a professional, but you understand what I'm saying.
I, I do. I, I, it's, it's important to have a good collaboration with the community as you're going through this process. It, it, you know, in the, the next design stages, we do want, we do ask to reach out to the, all the different town staff. I mean, you're, you're going to need, ultimately, before this is built, you would need approvals and review by the, the Board of Health. Oftentimes, the planning board depends on the community. We, I could dive into the regulations there. So you'll have to, you'll want to make sure you're talking to them about these things early on. So, yes, and then, and then in the, we call it, you know, the design development process, there would be a formal preparation of plans, submission of a permanent application and a thorough review. But getting to them, you know, when the design advances a little bit more is, is an important step.
And you're thinking that the stormwater drainage part will be fine to, to cover over and put a parking lot on top of?
Yes, yes. You actually have many underground systems here right now that you're driving on. There's a number of systems that are.
Cool.
So, yeah, they're 24-inch, two-foot diameter pipes, all backfill with crushed stone, all stuffed under different parking areas and underneath your, your drives. So, yeah, there's a series of them, and we probably do something, something similar. We do, we usually use the half shells, these chambers that are like pipes cut in half, a little more efficient if you want to get into the, you know.
It's, it's interesting. That's what I, yeah. It's like a, like a horror movie.
I was going to say, it was like when you go to Disney and they have all the tunnels underneath. They're like all the characters.
I don't think about that. It's not big. It's not a scary thing.
I wouldn't recommend walking through them.
It's not the Phantom of the Opera around here. They're not that big, right? All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Can we have Disney characters in the next job?
Absolutely. We'll figure out a way to incorporate them. Sure. Okay. I'll turn it over now to, to Derek, who's here to talk about traffic.
All right, so I'm very, my name is Derek Hug with PAR Corporation. I'm one of the traffic engineers on the project, and, you know, most of the time when I come to one of these things, like, everybody's looking forward to my stuff, so I'm really relieved that the cost guys after me. And usually, it's my stuff that usually gets compared to the prison sentence or whatever. All right. So we've completed an initial traffic analysis for the project. We reviewed the site and the expansion for access, safety, and traffic capacity. We did a lot of data collection around the site and on the site. We looked at five study intersections, which included the, the three site driveways, the existing site driveways. We also looked at the intersection of Boardman and Rockwood, and also Rockwood and Union at Main, the roundabout that's down at the southern end of that photo there. We also requested crash data and, and received that and looked at that. We got five years of crash data. We also did two speed studies, one on Boardman and one on Rockwood. Both of those were near the existing site driveways, so that way we could do a site distance analysis. And then we also did two observations, onsite observations, one at during arrival time, one at dismissal time, to look at existing traffic operations here and, and try to anticipate whether or not the way things flow around here is going to work when you expand the student body. In addition, we looked at how much traffic we anticipate will be coming in and out of here with the expanded student body. And for, for that, we counted all the existing driveways, had the existing counts, and what we did was we prorated it for a 40% expansion in the number of trips based on student body and staff increases that are anticipated. And then we distributed those additional trips to the study intersections based on existing traffic patterns. We did capacity analyses at all five of those intersections. We did them for the morning arrival peak hour, the afternoon dismissal peak hour, and also the afternoon commuter peak hour. And we did all three of those for, under existing conditions, 2023. Then we expanded traffic volumes out to 2028 based on population growth in the area. But in 2028, we did two different analyses, one with the school as it is now, and then we did a second one, adding the 40% increase in trips. So to our observations, these observations, we, we did our observations onsite on January 18th, which I believe was a Wednesday. And what we found was that, it's kind of hard to see here. Is there a? Is that top one that's a pointer? Okay. In black here is the parent drop-off pattern, or root, primary root, anyway, coming in off of Rockwood. And the solid black line here is what we observed were the, were the queue lengths here in the, in the morning, which were basically just around the faculty parking lot. Some parents did also come in off this entrance over here by the ball fields, but that was pretty, were very few. And then the buses all came in out of the, this entrance here off of Boardman. And because the, the buses, just like the parents, the arrival is somewhat staggered in the morning, there was very little queue. There wasn't more than, you know, maybe three buses, three or maybe four buses at any given time here. For parking, we, you know, there are four major parking areas. There's this faculty parking here in the southeast corner, which was almost at full capacity. There's a row of parking here that was at full capacity. This parking lot here was at about 50% capacity, and the, the massive rows of, of parking along the ball fields were nearly empty, were maybe 10% of those spaces were occupied. It was almost completely empty. In the afternoon, the patterns are exactly the same. Buses come in off of Boardman. The vast majority of the parents come in off of Rockwood. The queues are a little bit longer because everybody gets to the school before dismissal and waits for, for, for the kids to get out. So the buses queue all the way up to the end of the sidewalk here, but the end of the queue is, is still in front of the school. And parents, instead of their, their queue ending, you know, somewhere around here, it extends another couple hundred feet west, but is in, never in anything even close to danger of getting out to Rockwood. Parking, the parking was exactly the same. When we went out here in the afternoon, nothing had really changed in terms of the demand. So cutting to the conclusions, so that way we can get to the cost part. We found that there's, you know, plenty of capacity, available capacity for parking as it is today. In addition, there's a plan to add 40-something more parking spaces. There should still be more than adequate parking capacity to handle all the staff and that, that you need. The queue lengths that we noticed left plenty of excess space before we're going to interfere with anything off-site, either, you know, Boardman or Rockwood. Our crash analysis, there was no location that we looked at that had more than an average of two crashes per year, and that was down at Main Street, at the, at the roundabout. And of the, I think we were 21 total crashes reported in the five years within the study area. Only two had, had personal injuries. The other 19 were just property damage, vendor-bender type collisions, and there were no fatalities. Couple of things we did notice, a couple of recommendations that we do have. I'm going to go back here. Up here at, coming out of this driveway, when you're looking to the right to take a, if you're going to go take a left out of this driveway, the site distance here is pretty short because there's a row of trees around this curve. And because this row of trees is on private property and we can't touch it, we can't do anything about it, we're proposing just to add some, some additional signage as you approach the site on Boardman, to just kind of make you more aware that there's a school driveway coming up. Obviously, we did the crash analysis. There was no indication that this has been a safety problem, but want to be, you know, proactive about it, knowing, knowing that it's there. The other thing that was noted to me was that the, the proposed pre-K is supposed to be like an off, a, a timing offset in terms of the start and finish times, and how, what was the length on it? Was it about 15 minutes?
The offset.
Yeah. It would be ideal if we could make that like a half an hour. With 15 minutes, you still have some overlap between the regular school and the pre-K, and the less of that we have, the better off everybody will be, I, you know, I'm sure. So the, the other final thing we did is we looked at all the capacity analyses, and we found that there was very little change in the delays between 2028 existing school, 2028 proposed expanded school. But we did note that there is one approach, the eastbound approach at, at Boardman and Rockwood, so we're, we're just off the map over here. As you, as you come sort of east on, on Boardman, and you get to this two-way stop at Rockwood, the eastbound approach has some fairly lengthy delays at times. Obviously, with, when you, we expand the volumes, it doesn't get any better, but we're, and that's mostly because there's a, is a very heavy left turn from, from Boardman onto Rockwood. This, this movement here is, is fairly heavy. We're not adding anything to that, to that movement, but we are, you know, adding some, some volume, you know, up and down Rockwood, which makes that delay a little bit worse. But it's an existing condition, and so we haven't flagged it as something that needs to be addressed as part of the school project. It's, it's not terrible, but it's certainly not ideal, and it is something that, you know, the town probably consider as part of a, a separate project, or if they wanted to lump it into this project, this project, they could, but I don't think it's something that's caused by this project. It's something that's in existing condition. And that's all I've got. Any questions?
I call that area Frogger. And I, I brought that up years ago, and was told there's no money, Jen, so leave it alone.
It's also the main corridor between the two schools in town, so frequently you have your parents going back and forth and the buses going, but yeah, it's, I've seen.
So I stop and let the buses cross.
Well, you're just great.
It is, it's a tough intersection. We've done some work with it. There's traffic signs now to, it's speed signs, and they did do some clearing to improve the sign.
Actually, that's right. They did. They took all those trees down as part of a 40B accommodation. There used to be a hole, as you would be coming out.
There's no visibility.
Sorry, if you, as you would be coming out over there, there used to be like a huge pots of trees.
Getting the smiley face from the speed sign is always very satisfying, too.
I don't know. I still triple process.
Any traffic questions?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
So, cost discussion. To sort of set the table as far as what we're going to talk about, to give everybody a sense of scale, obviously, over the past handful of years, two, three, four years, everybody hears it. Cost has been going through the roof since the pandemic, supply chain issues, just delays, cost is going crazy. I mean, whether it's gas, whether it's building materials. So to set the table, what is up on the screen here is actually pulled from the MSBA website. Now, we know this isn't an MSBA project. However, the MSBA actively tracks construction costs for all of their projects. So this goes back to 2008, I believe, is over here. As you can see, the original Freeman Kennedy project is over here. Little bit about this diagram here is that this orangish line that comes through, that is the average cost for school construction based on that year. And as you can see, it's sort of slowly increasing for the first 10 years or so. So back in November of 2010, when bids were received for this building that we're in right now, the average cost, or the cost per square foot was $263 a square foot. So throughout time, just natural escalation, natural increase in pricing. It brings us to here. This dot, and if you can sort of, you can see it a little bit better over here, it turns into a dash line, the orange line. So this dot is the end of the hard data that the MSBA currently has because that is where the projects are closed out. the projects are closed out. Everything beyond are still in construction. Projects aren't closed out. So that dashed line is the projected average once those are closed out. So you can see the dots, they're not filled in. That's because they're not closed out. So the average right now in 2021 on closed projects is $509 a square foot. So you can see from 2010 to 2021, it's what, 11 years? It goes up $240, $252 or whatever that is over that 10-year period. So just to sort of set the stage, we'll talk about estimates and then we'll show you where your expansion project fits within this graph here. So we sent documents out to estimating based on floor plans, based on all the site utility stuff, based on the site layout, all that information that we've presented to you previously, sent it out to our professional estimator. This is all they do. They estimate all of our projects and they estimate particularly school projects. So what we asked for and what we received back is broken out into separate items, the cost of the actual building construction, the cost of the actual site work, phasing, GCs, GR, so general conditions, general requirements, insurance, et cetera. This lump here is contractor fees. This is bonds. This is a percentage and it's included on every project. It's basically the cost for the contractor to do their work. Soft costs. So soft costs are items like furniture, fixtures and equipment, technology, architecture, engineering and OPM fees, as well as your contingency. So this is above and beyond construction cost. So that is the four items up here. And then throughout conversations with this group and the working group, four additional items were identified to get pricing on. So not necessarily directly required for the expansion project. However, if construction was going to occur, it would be worthy analyzing basically systems maintenance, upgrades, et cetera. So the four items that were identified is to replace the existing mechanical systems chiller over by the gym. Number two is the existing playground updates. So that is fixing the fence, updating some of the equipment with maintenance, and primarily this involves resurfacing, that the fall protected rubber surfacing would be included with this. Number three is replace all of the mechanical units on the roof. If the crane is going to be here, if the contractors are going to be here, typically life cycle is 15 to 20 years. You're right within that window. What would it cost to replace all the units on the existing building? And then number four is replace the entire fire alarm, not just adding the fire alarm in the new expansion, but throughout the existing system to get away from a proprietary system and utilize something that is a little bit more user friendly. So we asked for all of these numbers separately, and that is what is included on this slide here. So we'll walk through it a little bit, starting from the top. And what we've provided is ranges. It's still really early in the project and the scope is still a little bit gray and it's far enough out that what's provided is ranges of projected costs. So building, building construction costs, including the required ADA updates. We're looking at between 16.4 and 18.1 million dollars. That's just for the construction of the new facility. Site costs, anywhere from 2.8 to 3.1. So those are all the items that Dave talked about previously with all that underground piping, all the utility work, all the septic work. It also includes paving. It includes the new pre-K playground. It includes all of those items related outside of the building. This line item here, the phasing, the general conditions, the insurance, that bucket, the cost of doing work basically with a contractor, that is between 7.2 and 8 million dollars. So if you take those three items and you add them up, the estimated construction cost, hard cost, is between 26.4 and 29.3 million dollars. So this number here is when, when somebody asks you how expensive is the building, there are really two possible answers. There's hard cost, what it costs to actually physically construct the building, but then there's also total project cost, including what's it going to take to put furniture in, what's it going to take to put technology in. So this item here, the 26.4 to 29.3, that is the hard cost. If you add in the soft cost, which is your furniture, your technology, all the design team, everybody included, your contingency, that is where this line item here, which gets you down to the estimated total project cost. So this is everything in 33.3 to 36.9 million. So that's where that lands for the building and the expansion, et cetera. So that number does not include those four additional items. The chiller, replacing the rooftop units, resurfacing and the playground updates up front, as well as the fire alarm upgrades. Those, the costs associated with those are down here and they're in your sheets roughly. We'll call it, we'll round numbers just for conversation, but mechanical system chiller, we'll call it 400, 400,000. Playground equipment is roughly a million. Replacing all existing rooftop units is roughly 2.5. And then replacing the entire fire alarm, 700,000. So by the time you take all of those, add those into your previous total project cost, it gets you a bottom line number of 37.9 to 42.1. So that is including your expansion project, but that is also including all of the other maintenance items, upgrades that are going to need to occur anyways in the near future with the mechanical systems, et cetera. So I know that was a lot of information. I'll flip to show you where you land and then we can open it up for questions regarding cost. So that chart that I had previously showed regarding the MSBA, the MSBA and sort of those numbers climbing, that price per square foot is based on the estimated construction cost. So that is the hard cost of the projects. So looking at your 26.4 to your 29.3 million, this is where it lands in the global overall chart. So we're coming in at roughly $727 a square foot. That is just for the expansion, not for the light renovation of the spaces within this building. The light renovation of spaces is minimal. It's not even 8,000 square feet. It's painting, some ceiling, some flooring. It's minimal in the grand scheme of things. So taking that out of the equation, just to sort of get apples to apples, where your new building project falls, you're at $727 a square foot. So looking at that in the overall chart, as you can see, the projected average is climbing, climbing, climbing. The projected average at the same time that this was escalated to, the average is roughly $775 a square foot. So coming in at 727, you're significantly under that average, looking at it in terms of that. So obviously, it's projections. The further down the line you get, the fewer data points you get. But I just wanted to show roughly where you land compared to average. The other thing I wanted to quickly show is that you had your existing, this building right here come in back in November of 2010 at 263. For the next 10 years, 11 years to the last data point that we currently have, it was an increase of $246 a square foot for 10 years. Within the next five years, we're actually increasing more than we did the previous 10 years. This increase is what we had talked about. That is pandemic, that is materials, that is contractor shortage, that is fill in the blank of everything that you've been hearing about. That's realistically what is happening. We've seen some significant escalations within the past, even up to within the past year or so. So that's why it basically increased within the last five years, the same amount it did for the previous 10 years. So I'll pause and open it up for questions. And again, I know this is a lot of information. We can go back to any of the slides, talk about any of the numbers.
I have a question. Two questions. One, the pre-K play area, is that included, the playground equipment, which I know that can be like a huge amount of money? Is that included already as part of the soft cost?
Playground equipment, because it's bolted in and built it and built into the ground, is actually included in this site number here. So there's 2.8 to 3.1. That includes the pre-K equipment.
Okay, all right. And then you're just recommending, you know what, since we're here, let's just up, let's kind of update the existing playground.
The one out front.
They won't be, preschool won't be playing on that one.
No. What we've looked at in, throughout this process, so the playgrounds that were installed, they're aging, they're 14 years, the surfacing is 13 years old and it's failing and it's hard to patch and stay up to code. So we asked, given that the potential of having contractors inside and having the speed grounds, is it worth looking at repairing that at the same time so that we're not doing it as a separate, isolated project? So all of those alts are decisions that the committee could make. They're not mandatory. I think eventually you'll have a town building committee. If things are coming in under cost in some areas, they may vote to add some of these alts or address them. But those are all things that on the 20-year maintenance plan of this building are costs that are coming up that might make sense and realize the town some savings by doing it when we already have a crew on site and the construction is set up. So rooftop chillers, as you, the rooftop chiller is the one over the gymnasium that has been a historic problem for the community and the neighborhood because of the loudness. Anybody on the prior building committee, we did a lot of noise studies, that's also aging out. That's one of them. The surfacing and the fencing is failing around the playgrounds here. They're, they're old, they're aging, and by the time you get to this project, they're going to be another two, three years older. And then the rooftop chillers, again, those are getting to the end of life, 15 to 20 years by the time, you know, you'll be on that fringe. So these are all options that the building committee and the town could decide on adding to the scope of this project because there, there's got to be costs coming up in the next, you know, five years anyway. Or you could delay depending on how the project funding goes.
And a chiller, is that like the air conditioning unit?
For the, for the, yes.
Central air.
Okay.
And I think that was, that was it. Oh, you may not be able to answer this, but do you anticipate construction costs going down? Because my husband's like, we don't need to do this. It's coming down in two years.
I would say that's a million dollar question, but that's the wrong terminology talking about cost. I wish I knew the answer. What we, and to be truthful about this whole situation, we've seen, like I said, we've seen costs increase significantly. Every now and then, there's a blip, levels off, but then it spikes again. Right now, we actually got bids back on a recent project a month ago. Seems like it leveled off, but it could be a blip. So it really is one of those things that it's, it's similar to what's the winning mega bucks number, honestly. Speculation, I mean, we do have, so PM and C, our estimator, like I said, they do all of our projects, they do all of our competitors' proj, most of our competitors' projects for schools and stuff like that. Like the previous estimate you guys had was by PM and C. And so they're, they're well in tune with the market. They're getting constant feedback from bid results. So they have a decent handle on what's happening and this is what they're, these costs here, what they're projecting based on your timeline of when you would be going out to bid, starting construction in that process there. So this, at this point in time, is their best guess based on current situation.
Great. No, thank you. That makes a lot of sense.
Is there equal confidence in those ranges in all those different buckets? Or is there one of those areas where they're like, we see a ton of variability here, this one could really swing? Or across the board, is it pretty?
Yeah, so the range was generated, so their estimate actually landed right in the middle of these numbers. To generate the range, it's 5% lower, 5% higher, which is a decent amount. One thing to note is that with all of these numbers here, and you can see it right here, well, it's a little bit fuzzy, but on your screen, contingency and escalation. This number here, there is a bucket of money within these numbers for contingency, for pricing to increase. The escalation is projections. As the project gets more developed and more defined, as you get closer to your bid date, those percentages go down because you actually, you get better market information as you get closer to it. So there are, there are buckets built in as sort of relief valves for this. As far as numbers going up and down, I would say that the biggest one honestly is the building construction cost. You're hearing electrical has gone up or steel has gone up. Luckily, knock on wood, the recent project that I'm referring to, actually steel costs were lower than estimated, which was positive. So again, it's speculation. This is the best information at this time and we're trying to do our best to gauge and to be as close as we can realistically.
You do have the benef, well, it's not a benefit, the whole time of coming on the heels of another capital project in town, but for the edification of this committee, that was 755 a square foot, the construction of the public safety building, which I think would be higher generally speaking than a school building, but I mean, it's on par with what we've recently approved for construction costs. That was just hard construction, though.
In your experience working with this group, how accurate have these projections been? Or is that too challenging to answer, given?
They're actually surprisingly pretty accurate. There was at the beginning of the pandemic, so we'll say 2020, because really that's when it, things went haywire. There was a little bit of a lag, but within the past couple of years, they've been, they've been pretty accurate. And the further we get out of it, they're basically lining up again. So they're, they're able to respond based on market conditions.
And on average, how many times would they realign? That's helpful to know.
Yeah, so professional estimates. So typically, they're done at multiple phases of the project. So this is early on, that's why they're ranges. As the project progresses, the range is going to go away and it's becoming, it's going to become a single number. So typically, from here on out, it would be at schematic design, it would be at design development, then typically 60%, 90%, and then your bids are 100%. So three to four additional times.
And they continue to refine.
And they, exactly. They continue to refine and they continue to get that market feedback to adjust their numbers accordingly.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Do you want to talk about the last item?
Yep. So next steps, the team is going to continue to update, compile the feasibility report. But really, the bigger item that I mentioned previously, April 27th is the currently scheduled community forum. We wanted to discuss, is that the appropriate day for the next community forum, understanding that the, the project isn't going to May Town meeting? So we wanted to have that conversation.
So I think we have two options at this point. Originally, we had hoped to bring the project forward for funding for the schematic design and the construction, to construction documents for that phase of the project at the May Town meeting. Because of the current budget situation with budget reductions across the board, across town, and because there isn't an alternate source of revenue that the town can use to support that and they're going to have to borrow, it's going to have to be passed at the ballot as well. So the recommendation from the town, which I think that we've discussed, is to move that, and the select board are asking us to move that request to the fall. So that said, we have two options. We could go forward with the community forum on April 27th and provide the information that we have to date. Or we could do a committee update at Town Meeting, provide this information at Town Meeting and talk about the status of the project and then have the community forum afterwards. I think there's advantages and disadvantage to each. This is a public document, it's going out, so we might have people in the public with questions now about the, the costs or the plans or the design that we don't want to leave hanging. But I'm also concerned about doing it too early, given that we're not going for a vote to the town until October. So we, I wanted to put that out to the committee and AI3 was willing to work with us on either plan to see which option you prefer. If you prefer to go forward with the April 27th date, or if you prefer to do an update at Town Meeting, which is the 17th of May, we could do projected costs and everything at that update and then have a community forum with more detailed information after that.
Wouldn't you want to have a community forum closer to the ballot date anyway?
We'll probably have another one in the fall. Yeah, as well. We'll probably have another one in the fall, yeah, as well.
If we were planning to have another one in the fall, then I, I don't see the harm in having one in April as well, I mean, I think that there's a modicum of momentum attached to the project right now that I'd prefer not to lose, um, and spoiler alert, uh, we're giving an update either way, I cleared that with Jay and Justin earlier today, so.
Great.
I'm on the list, but.
It probably helps streamline questions at Town Meeting, too, if you do.
If we do the community forum first and then.
Okay.
I don't know if we'll get the best attendance, just because baseball, lacrosse, everything is happening right now.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's worth to try, but I, I really don't know about the attendance, that's the only.
Yeah, and we will repeat in, I mean, we will do something, we've talked about already in the fall, um, but it's more just making sure that we have as many opportunities to get the information, have people ask questions. We talked about at the community forum, we had quite a few people come from, what's the name, Rivers?
Rivers Edge.
Rivers Edge, and we talked about going and doing a presentation there, um, as well. So, I think we're going to try to seek as many opportunities to get the information out to the public as possible. Uh, but if everybody's comfortable with April twenty-seventh, at that point, you'll be close to having the report complete, um, and we can, we can go forward with that. That sound good?
For people who can't attend, are there like pamphlets?
Well, we videoed it last time, and it's on cable, so it'll be available to the public if they can't ma- make it. Um, we could consider live streaming that one, um, but we could talk about that further, we just have to find the space and work with cable.
Yep.
Sound good?
All right, so we'll keep the date.
Okay.
Any other questions for AI?
Thank you very much for all of your work, and thanks for coming. Have a good night. All right, next we have, um, the Norfolk PTO here, and they are going to provide a brief overview of their, uh, role, their function. Um, we are very fortunate to have an active PTO, we strongly encourage more people to get involved. There's a core of, uh, PTO members that do a tremendous amount of work for fundraising, helping us bring in enrichment programs, um, funding teacher grants, all kinds of things. So, I'm going to invite them up, you have to come to the mic so we can hear you, and they're going to give us.
Can we take like a two minute break, so they can clear out?
We can do that.
Jen, yeah, can we take like a two minute break from, so they don't get everybody's kerfuffle on?
Sure, thank you.
All right, so I'm Jen Wolf, I'm co-chair of the PTO, I'm mom to Ethan Miles and Gavin in eighth, fourth, and second grade. Um, so the PTO had a reduced presence over the course of the pandemic, and we're getting back into the swing of things, and so we wanted to talk a little bit about the role of the PTO, um, and how we are supporting the schools. At our core, we are about, um, connections, so we help to support a lot of the programs within the school, filling in some of the, um, gaps in terms of different programming and, um, supplies that are needed. And, um, in my, um, professional role as a child psychologist, I can tell you study after study that talks about the importance of a strong community between parents, teachers, and students. And so we really see this as, at our core, we want to be able to strengthen those bonds and the sense of community that each of those individuals has, um, knowing what a strong protective factor this is for the parents, the teachers, and, um, the children. So we help all of them to, um, thrive in this environment and feel like they are supported, um, by each other and by the community. Um, there's a lot of volunteering involved, so the lunch duty, the library help, all of those roles are things that are fulfilled by the PTO. Um, we do raise, uh, funds, so that we can provide funding for non-budgeted items, so you can see some of the activities that, um, are coming up. The Color Fun Run, um, came back in June of last year, after a hiatus for a few years, um, coming back in a few weeks. Bingo was a huge hit this year, um, after not having it for several years, and Coin Wars, we just had a very successful campaign, we raised over four thousand dollars through Coin Wars. And, um, we also have a number of things that we fund, so Authors Day, Dare, Chorus, Field Day, Camp Born Dale, the bullying prevention programs, curriculum enhancements. Uh, we also respond to staff requests, so two times a year, staff put in grant requests, um, and sometimes there's also additional wish items that come up that we're able to fulfill. So this year, we had the Discovery Museum, High Touch High Tech, um, a number of different curriculum enhancements, and, um, we also added a very successful teacher appreciation committee this year, um, they have just been phenomenal, so they are giving goodie bags every time that there's a conference, and bringing chocolates on National Chocolate Day, and all kinds of things, so that the teachers know that, um, they are being supported by the parents, especially in those rough conference weeks and other things. Um, we have a number of activities, um, so that we can fund some of these things, the curriculum enhancements, the teacher appreciation, donate, donations, Born Dale, et cetera. Um, we did have a reduced presence during COVID, and, um, this year, trying to get back into the swing of things, it's been a challenging year, was trying to get volunteers motivated again, and, um, we, there's a number of activities that we hadn't done for a number of years, and so people, we kept hearing, they don't know what the PTO does, they don't know about these activities, and it's been really challenging trying to get the communication back out there again. So, uh, we had been limited to putting things out just in Wednesday's words, and just, um, by example, bingo, the week before the event, we had eighteen people who had signed up, and by being able to send out just one connect ed, we ended up with two hundred people sign up in the next two days after that connected. So, the communication that we're allowed to have between the school and home is really, really valuable. Um, these are some of the thank yous that come in, the teachers, um, appreciating some of the things that are, um, given by the PTO, and, um, we are always looking for volunteers. So, um, so we appreciate the support of the school and being able to do these activities, and look forward to the continued partnership.
Jen, can you just highlight, what's the best way for people who are interested in volunteering? Because I know you have a range of ways people can get involved that are, um, responsive to different schedules and people's availability. What's the best way for people to reach out?
So if they email Norfolk M A P T O.
Okay.
Um, at gmail dot com, that is the best way to get in contact with us. We have long-term positions, we have one-time event positions, there's something for every schedule, and we love, we can put anybody to work.
Excellent, great, thank you. Any questions for tonight?
Thank you to PTO, I mean, they always do an amazing job, and, um, favorite Color Fun Run ever, best one.
And I know it's been very hard to regain volunteer momentum after the blip year, as a, as a lapsed volunteer myself, I'm sure.
But there's always something.
Yeah, I think one of the things that Jen talked about, that, um, during the pandemic, one of the things that a lot of our kids really missed are those social community-based activities that help them be connected to their school. Um, just last week, we had trivia for different grade levels, the energy, the excitement, the connection, it's just, um, we had two hosts of trivia here, uh, it's really great to see, and it does take a tremendous amount of work and time. So, um, any way that people are interested in getting involved, as, as the PTO has said, I'm sure there's ways that they can help and, and support us bringing those programs back, and, and supporting those ways for, for students to, um, benefit, not just through in-school programming, but after-school and enrichment activities as well. So, great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen.
Thanks, Jen.
All right, next on our agenda, I am thrilled that we have tonight our, uh, Regional Director of Diversity Equity and Inclusion, Caleb Encarnacion Rivera, and what I wanted to say before, we'll bring him up, and Vicky's going to change over the commu- uh, computers, um, but we have had a longstanding commitment in Norfolk to, and, and we read it in our mission statement every meeting, uh, to provide a safe, joyful learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse learners. Um, we are very passionately committed to making sure that every child that walks through our doors feels connected, feels a sense of belonging in the school, can see themselves represented in the curriculum, um, that we are preparing all of our students with universally high expectations and standards for achievement, and that we are successfully preparing kids to, um, move forward in their educational careers through each venture to be successful in competing in a global economy. Um, we have been, we're in our second year of our district equity audit, Vicky Saldana has been co-leading that committee with me. Um, last year Jessica Pepel supported our efforts, this year Caleb is working with us on that equity audit. We are looking at, uh, we've sent, uh, community surveys, parent surveys, we're in the process of putting together some parent focus groups, we are looking at what we're doing well as a district, where we are, uh, thriving and excelling, and we are looking to see, are there areas, um, policies, practices, um, anything that we have in place where we're not fully meeting the needs of our students. Um, we want to make sure that we're removing barriers, and that we are supporting all kids in being able to access all of the curriculum, all of the opportunity with equal access. So, um, with that said, welcome to Caleb, and he's going to come in, what his role has been, again, he's across all four districts, Rantham, Plainville, Norfolk, and King Philip. The role looks a little different at each stage. At the, um, middle and high school, Caleb's been doing a lot more student-facing work, um, course, uh, also teaching a course. Um, at the elementary, we've really been focusing on staff development, as well as community, opportunities for community engagement, so. Great, thanks Caleb.
Oh yeah, if you could, that'd be great, thank you. Right, well, good evening, everyone, it's good to be able to finally meet you all. Um, so I've been in the position now for about seven months now, um, it has gone by really fast. So, um, I will start by just talking a little bit about, um, the background of what sort of came about of me devising this plan. Um, like, uh, Ingrid mentioned, I'm spread across four districts, so you all get twenty-five percent of me. Um, and I think that one of the things, me coming on board, was really trying to recognize where were areas that we could try to develop a cohesive agenda in terms of moving this work forward. This work is very difficult work, it is not easy work, um, it's work that does not happen overnight, there are days I wish I could just snap my fingers, and we will accomplish the different goals that we have set forward in regarding, in regards to DEI, um, but this is work that really takes six to ten years in terms of really transforming a school culture, um, around diversity, equity, and inclusion. Um, I think that the greatest challenges with this, um, work in general, has been that this work is heavily politicized, right? Um, we have seen, um, trends, I think, across the nation, um, uh, since the, um, Black Lives Matter, and since, um, especially since the murder of George Floyd, um, where there has been most certainly an uprise of, um, activism in regards to this work, um, but also school districts really beginning to, um, bring in individuals such as myself to, um, pioneer and lead this work collectively with, um, with teachers, with parents, with students, and with community. Um, with that said, um, and the heavy politicization of this work, um, that makes things difficult, I think a lot of the challenges are rooted in, um, the fact that the approaches are not always done in a strategic way, in a way that, um, is done where people begin to recognize that the work is not necessarily about political affiliation or politics, but more has to do around with, um, encompassing that we are centralizing the importance of belonging, and that we are all different individuals, and have different lived experiences, and have different backgrounds, and that it's important that we all honor that, um, and that we honor that as a means to truly establish an authentic and inclusive culture, um, for all of our students, um, for all of our teachers, um, for everyone that's involved within our school community. Um, and that is sort of where this plan came out of, and so, as we go on to the next slide, um, we, me, um, going into developing the goals, so, we're starting slow, because, like I said, this work is slow-moving work. Um, and after my listening tour and sort of gathering informal, um, data across the districts around where we're kind of at, we are most certainly at the stage of really, um, unpacking identity. Um, so, I have seen in this work, a lot of the time, individuals will want, um, robust training on anti-racism, or microaggressions, and all other aspects that is encompassed within the realm of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and that is important. However, the work really has to be centered around, uh, establishing a foundation for understanding identity development, um, and what identity development is, and how, um, identity and lived experience plays a crucial role, um, into the practice of educators. Um, and so, with that said, the two goals that I have established for this year, um, across the elementary districts, the first being, teachers and staff and administration will collectively and individually reflect on identity and instruction within the scope of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and its impact on their practice. Um, and then the second, parents and community will collectively gauge and lead, um, learning opportunities specifically related to anti-racism. Um, and I will get into that piece, um, but I, I look and view this work through three different perspectives, first being, um, the teacher, staff, and administration, right, those who are within the school, secondly, with the community, um, and then students. And we don't see students up here yet, because, like I mentioned, most of my, um, student-facing work is happening at KP, because I'm spread across the four districts, it has been sort of challenging to kind of be able to, I, I wish there was five of me, right? Um, but I think in the years to come, like I said, this work is not overnight, that we can begin to assess how we begin to devise also plans around doing some more student-facing work. Um, so there's two strategic plans that have been devised in regards to DEI, one for the elementary districts, that's a little bit more cohesive, and I'll explain as, as we go through, and then one that's completely separate, um, with KP, with King Philip, um, that has some similarities, but also is, um, a little bit different in the model and structure. So going on to the plan, um, and we'll focus, um, uh, specifically, um, in, so, well, all of these elements here look the same, but we're going to focus specifically here in Norfolk. So, these are the three elementary districts, um, basically the information is just repeated, so I, this is kind of like the map that I've designed in terms of what this year is looking like. So focusing on Norfolk, um, these are the three initiatives that I'm going to be talking about, um, today specifically. Um, these two are one initiative, um, this is, uh, and that's the Identity Speaks Professional Development Series, and I'll talk about that in the next slide. Um, we have also a BIPOC educator affinity space that we are beginning, um, that, actually this upcoming week. And then, the third thing I'll talk about is the Community Parent Book Club, um, that we have also started and finished, and are still in the process of working towards. Um, so I, I'll just go right into the individual projects instead of looking at this map, this is something that I figured it'd be good for folks to see sign, how they intersect, but that's, no, that's okay. Um, and so we'll get right into Identity Speaks. So Identity Speaks is a professional development opportunity that I developed, um, starting at the beginning of the year, again, thinking about the imp- the beginning of the year, again, thinking about the importance of how this work is centralizing identity development first, right, before we begin to dive into conversations of race and anti-racism and ableism and sexism and all of these other isms and manifestations of oppression and how that functions within a school environment, identity is where we need to start, and reflecting on who we are and how our lived experiences contribute to our practice as educators. With that said, Identity Speaks is a regional professional development opportunity, if you actually just go back to the map for me. So, you'll see on the map how the Identity Speaks Professional Development Series Part One, how it's interconnected between the three districts because it was a regional opportunity. So, what happened there is we offered it to teachers as an optional professional development opportunity where they were receiving in-depth identity development training, and we had teachers participating from the three districts. We had a total of about 10 teachers, two specifically coming here from Norfolk. And the idea was that was them going through a deep dive session with me for five sessions, and if we go to the next slide, in terms of the timeline here, so between, we started in November and ended in January, and this was the period of learning. So, me really going into depth with the teachers that were part of this series and really reflecting on what is identity, and how do our lived experiences contribute to our work as educators and specifically reflected in practice. I think a lot of the time, as educators, we emphasize the importance of identity development within our students and reflecting on how that contributes to learning, but I think we do a poor job as educators of doing it for ourselves and recognizing how that also has deep implications for how we go about our practice. And so, between November and January, we went through those five sessions of really digging deeper and unpacking identity within the scope of practice. And now we are in the second portion of creating. So, between February and March and kind of into April, May will do the leading portion, but during this creation period, what ended up happening is we have different teacher leaders who representative from the regional group who are now working with me separately to plan a professional development opportunity for all staff in their respective districts. And the idea of doing this was so that this work is viewed from a perspective of everyone doing their part. I think a lot of the times and challenges with DI directors in a lot of districts across the state is that there is this emphasis on bringing in an external person to do this work and not really bringing in the community along with that individual to co-lead this work. I recognize that I am an outsider. I'm not from here, I'm new to this district, I'm learning, and I most certainly, although I'm here to help lead and guide, I will, I can't do it alone, right? If we really want to embrace this work and transform this culture, it's going to require the collective. And so, by this, by creating this model, it's an opportunity for teachers to have to go through the learning with myself, but now to be able to plan and lead and eventually execute a professional development learning opportunity related to identity. So, not in the regional group, not everyone participated in that second opportunity, so that's, if we go back to the map, that's Identity Speaks Professional Development Series Part Two. So, this is the Part Two section that I was discussing. So, we have both of our representatives from Norfolk who are part of the Part One series are a part of the Part Two planning, and we are planning on May 3rd to utilize our professional development half day that day to completely dedicate it to Identity Speaks. So, currently I'm working with those two teachers along with two other members of the Norfolk Equity Committee, who, and we are planning what that professional development session will look like based on the learning that those two teachers and the others have gone through around identity. Let's go back to the slide, thank you. So, in May, we will lead this professional development opportunity. We're really looking forward to it. I've already had several sessions with the teacher leader representatives who will be co-facilitating this professional development opportunity with myself. And I think it's going to be awesome. Additionally, we're hoping, fingers crossed, that we're actually going to be able to have students as well to help co-lead and facilitate this. I don't have time to go into it now, but in the KP plan, we are also running an Identity Speaks program. The model, though, is looked at from the perspective of students as opposed to teachers. So, in King Philip, I took the time to do this Identity Speaks work but train students to be experts in identity development work, and they are actually leading their own professional development for their teachers at KP around identity development. So hopefully, we'll be able to get some of those students who are trained in KP to join us on May 3rd to help co-facilitate, since there's a lot of us between the two schools. In Plainville and Rantham, in case you all are curious, we are also the same model. They have adopted a different model where they're embedding it within the school day, so the last week of May, two days in Plainville, two days in Rantham. We have those teacher leaders running identity development circles that are rotating throughout the school day, rotating through the grade levels. And then in June, the plan will be to do some reflection for those teacher leaders who are part of this process to, for me to sort of gather data and assess how this process went and what it was like and sort of informing where we can kind of expand this in year two. Moving on to the next initiative, so the BIPOC educator affinity space, this is something that is just starting. We're going to have actually our first session tomorrow, and took some time to kind of craft and develop. The purpose of this space is really recognizing the importance of equity. I think a lot of the time we're having these conversations, the voices of those who have identities that have been historically marginalized and furthest away from social justice typically do not have a space to be able to voice their experiences, voice their concerns. It's, right, it's no doubt in recognizing that in terms of our staffing here in Norfolk and across the three other districts, around racial diversity specifically, it's not much. And in my conversations with staff and educators of color across the districts, there really hasn't been an opportunity for them to be able to have a space in reflection and reflecting how their own identities have strong implications for their practice and what that means in the context of the individual school districts and communities that they're in. That said, I felt it was really important for us to begin to have this space, to be able to have this reflection and unpacking and connection. And so, for this space, there's really no agenda because I think it's important that it's crafted from a perspective of not just trying to necessarily accomplish something, but really just being a space of just pure reflection. That's not to say that there might be things that come out of this space that I'm already thinking about in the years to come, but I have sort of centered the affinity space around four areas. First, it'll be an area of reflection where individuals will just be able to reflect on how their identity, racial identity specifically, has impacted the scope of their practice and specifically in the district or school where they're working in. Secondly, a place to kind of unpack, I know myself, when I started my career as an educator, as one of the few educators of color in a predominantly, in a school district predominantly comprised of students of color, it was very difficult for me. There were a lot of experiences that I encountered and I didn't really have a thought partner to kind of unpack what those experiences meant and what that meant for me in terms of how I went about my practice. And so, really being able to have, be a space to have those thought partners and unpacking those elements is what I'm looking for in this space. Additionally, establishing connection, one of the things that I've noticed amongst staff of color and educators of color across the districts is there really isn't connection amongst them. And I think being able for, being able to have the districts connect in that way, I think could be something that's really powerful and I think really validating in a lot of the experiences where they may find commonality. And then lastly, I think a space of healing. Being an educator of color is very tough, right? There are so many areas of this profession as an educator in general that's difficult, but when you have the perspective of, and when you have the identity of race added on to it, given the way systems are designed, it is even extrovert in some in a lot of ways, and I speak of that coming from my own personal experience as an educator of color. And I think it's important to foster that healing because a lot of the time, there is a lot of racialized trauma that people don't always want to acknowledge, and a lot of the time, because there aren't spaces of acknowledgement, there's not spaces to be able to sort of process that. And I think he, out of all of these components, I think healing is the most important one for this space. And then last is a book club that we started and that we are now sort of in the ending stages of, and we are reading How to Raise an Anti-Racist by Dr. Urum Kendi, who is a leading scholar at Boston University. He's a leading scholar nationally, has numerous books that are New York Times bestsellers around racial justice work and anti-racism work specifically. And sort of how this book club was designed, again, following a similar pattern to some of the other initiatives around really learning, creating, leading, and reflecting. I wanted to design this book club with intentionality, right, that it wasn't just another book club where we kind of read the book and we kind of talk and reflect. I think that's sort of the normalcy around how book clubs function, but I wanted to design this with purpose and intentionality. And so, between Feb, we started the book club in February, wrapping it up now in April, so between February and April was really the learning, reading the book, dissecting and unpacking its different ideas and learning collectively as a group. And now between April and May, we're going to enter the creation phase. And so, in this phase, my vision for this was, again, not to just have parents kind of read this book and talk about it and then kind of, okay, it's over, but to think about how can we take what we've learned from this book and what we've learned from our conversations and dialogues collectively and sort of share that with other parents or community members who maybe didn't have the opportunity to participate in the book club. And so, between now and May, the plan will be where I will have some further follow-up meetings with those parents and community members who are part of the book club who were interested to plan some sort of community workshop where we will share our learning. And so, hopefully, I'm planning to hopefully do this sometime in May, and we'll lead some sort of community workshop related to anti-racism and issues raised that we talked about in our learning throughout the book club. And then in June, we'll have another reflection process with those parents who participated in that aspect of the project in order for me to gather some data and to think about what could come out of this in year two as well. So, those are the three sort of big central initiatives that I'm working on besides a lot of other things. And again, I think that, like I mentioned, this work is difficult work. It's not going to happen overnight. There's a lot of challenges that come with doing this work, but it's work that's of the utmost urgency. I think a lot of people want to politicize this work, but in reality, it's not about left or right, it's not about politics. What it's about is recognizing and honoring individual human lives, experiences, and the identities that come with that. And I'm very confident thus far, based on the different successes that we've had through these initiatives, that we're in, we're taking numerous steps in the right direction. So, thank you for having me, I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Caleb.
Yes.
Thank you. This was very thorough, and I appreciate you coming to talk to us tonight. One of the things I was kind of looking at, when I think about DEI, I think about race as an issue, but I also think about our special needs population, our kids with disabilities, English language learners, families who are economically disadvantaged. Can you talk a little bit about how they fit into your vision, your overall picture?
Yeah, so, I would say that although from this perspective, we're looking at race, I would say that this plan and initiative is not race-based and is identity-based. And so, I think when we look at identity as the focal point, all of these other elements come out of that, whether it be race, whether it be talking about special needs, whether it be talking about language and English language learners. I think that over time, as we start with identity, we're going to get to those different areas in recognizing the other numerous identities that are encompassed within the scope of diversity, equity, and inclusion work. One of the reasons that diversity, equity, and inclusion work does though have, I think, a strong focal point on racial justice is because of the way racism and the system of racism manifests itself. And so, when we look at scholars who do work around social justice and intersectionality, if you read about Black Feminist Theory, that really began the focal point of intersectionality and what that looks like, we recognize that race is an element that really has to be the focal point in starting this work because of the way of how race intersects with other identities. And race has strong implication for when we look at special needs, language, and other identities. A lot of the time, and actually, Dr. Urum Kendi in the chapter we just read for one of the books talked about, he has a chapter called, I think it's called Pre-Teen Disability, but he talks about in this chapter how to be anti-racist is also to be anti-ableist, and how there are a lot of intersections in when we think about individuals who are disabled or with special needs, that there is a lot of inequity that exists when you look at the intersectional lens of race within that. When we look at language, a lot of our English language learners are, also happen to be students of color, right? And race is an implication within all of that. So, when I look at DEI, I most certainly look at it from a multifaceted perspective when we're looking at diversity with race as the focal point because that's intentional in terms of how the work grows. And a lot of the time, race is where individuals are most uncomfortable. I think when we're looking at a community like Norfolk and like the other districts that is predominantly white, it's important to focus on race as the focal point because we have to begin to unearth a little bit of that uncomfortableness that exists within that aspect of identity in order to truly approach the other forms of manifestations and forms of discrimination and oppression from other, other, other identities. I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, that makes, that makes sense. How do you do that, though, while still affirming and validating people who all have your end goal of having everyone feel welcome and recognized and validated, but who have different viewpoints on you on this topic? You know, at the book club, if you don't agree with everything that Dr. Kendi says, how do you make those voices feel welcome too? If some people think, I just have different opinions on DEI and how we best address these issues which are complicated and complex and you have opinions that span a wide spectrum, how do you create an environment where everyone feels like they can speak? Do you know what I'm saying? And that they don't feel like this is the right answer, I'm only allowed to say this in this day and age, which unfortunately, it's where we've gotten to, you can only say certain things. I'd love to hear how you're working to form this community that's open to not only diverse groups, but also diversity of thought.
Yeah, that's a great question. Again, not easy. I think that, again, it goes back to approaching this from identity development. And so, I think with this work, I've intentionally designed the beginning of this from the perspective of identity development. So, it's not that we're looking at- So it's not that we're looking at, sure, so we're reading the book of How to Raise an Anti-Racist, and there may be elements of the work where individuals may disagree with Dr. Kendi. The book club, though, it's an open space where it's not necessarily a space where we're saying we agree with everything Dr. Kendi is saying, but it's a space where people are able to voice their opinions and questions of maybe areas where they don't agree. And then thinking about how do those viewpoints reflect back to your lived experience and your own identities? I think a lot of the time, when we see resistance to this work and individuals who are resistance to the complexities around DEI work, a lot of the time, it's because those individuals haven't been provided with the opportunity to do some identity work and digging deeper into how their identities contribute to how they see the world. And so one of the approaches that I take to this work is recognizing the importance of valuing everyone's point of view, regardless of whether I agree with it or not, from, and I look at it from the perspective, okay, then let me help you sort of dig into what pieces of your identity, who you are, your lived experiences have contributed to how you see the world. Paulo Freire is a famous educational philosopher, and he talks a lot about this in regards to how educators read the world and how the way we read the world is deeply rooted in our lived experiences and the way that we have lived our lives. And I think a lot of these initiatives also, as you've pointed out, right, have, really are more geared towards individuals who probably have more positive attitudes towards DEI work as opposed to those who would maybe be a little bit more resistant to that work. And I've actually designed that intentionally for the starting point. And the reason for that is because it's about building capacity. I recognize that as an external leader, someone who's not from here, from an external space, not from this community, and I don't live in this community, I can't be necessarily the one to provide a space where we can collectively grow through those who are also resistant to the work. I can most certainly be a part of it, but it's really going to take the effort of the community and everyone within the school, community space, and educators to do so. And that's why I think it's important to sort of approach those who have done some, also some internal work already, and in order to build that capacity, in order to also establish a community where we are reaching those who may also be, have different views to this work. For me, though, I think in, those who may have different views and resistance to the work of DEI, I think we also need to think about how those views and resistant views also can be inherently damaging, right? So if I have an individual who's going to come to this book club and have resistant views, it's not that I'm going to kick that person out of the book club, but I'm also going to be conscious about how those resistant views also have impact and hurt a lot of the time as well. And I, as a leader, I'm here to establish a space where there is collective love and collective healing. And in dealing with resistance, I most certainly will not cater to resistant ideas that cause impact and hurt. And I think that has to be the emphasis and focus as well.
And Jim, and also, so what has been really great to partner with Caleb as part of like the leadership team, and it's kind of women's theme is like, and you kind of alluded to that too, is like the building of capacity, you know? So a lot of our work has been with the leadership because our ultimate goal is when we talk about like SEL, like social emotional needs of our students, right? And that really comes from having a safe environment. And one of the biggest components that, like we have the data, the research that shows that having a safe environment is where students see themselves in the curriculum, you know what I mean? Where the students see themselves represented in this, within the school that they attend. And to extend that further is when the community also sees themselves reflected in our schools, you know? And for us to be able to do that, to really understand what that means for each student, we said like there's such a variety of, you know, abilities and, and people have different backgrounds, is that we have to have a deep understanding, like when we talk about somebody's identity, like what does that truly mean? You know what I mean? And the, all the aspects of it. And that takes a lot of like self-work and internal work, you know what I mean? That is not, it's not innate. Like you have to be kind of, given the resources, given the tools, given the language, to really understand where you fall within your identity and how does your own self-understanding is reflecting and impacting others you're coming in contact with, right? So then you can really honor others' identity as well. And I think like having Caleb, what he has done a really great job is kind of building that understanding within, by building teacher leaderships, by having the administrators kind of go through that process. So then we're able to then to kind of, like kind of push that forward, you know what I mean, too? And be able to bring that into our, to, to, to our staff, to other people, to kind of really show people how to truly understand like what, what identity means. And that it's in itself becomes very all-inclusive, you know? So, and I think I joined like the third book club, I was able to, I was unfortunate, I wanted to do all of them, but I need to conflict, but the conversations were very, I felt like the group that was there, like people, Caleb really created a space where people had an opportunity to, again, to really explore, like he said, kind of like, what does that mean for them? A lot of people kind of reflected the impact it had on maybe their family, their children, you know what I mean? And it really was a very, like, I felt like it was very inclusive. I think that everybody would, had an opportunity to really kind of ask questions and kind of share experiences with, like, with having like a common established understanding, you know what I mean? So I thought that it was like really well set up. I think like you said, you did put a lot of intention into it. It wasn't like, you, you, everything, I think, your approach is very intentional, you know what I mean? And kind of make sure that the goal is, is that people are able to like feel comfortable, you know what I mean? And be able to kind of really do that self-exploration.
And I would just add to that. I think that there's a couple of things that I'd want to point out. One, I think there are a lot of diverse opinions. There's a, this is something that is very heated politically right now, as I think Caleb recognized. I think, two things. I think, one, we have to step back and, and look at the common goal. And our common goal is that all of our kids feel connected, feel sense of belonging, feel celebrated, feel empowered, and get the best possible education. So there are diverse opinions, but we share a common goal. We all want to, to see our kids successful, see them be connected. I think as Caleb is, is sharing, one of the hardest things for people to have conversations around is race. It is the least comfortable for a lot of people to engage in dialogue with different, different perspectives, different opinions. And until we can make that a comfortable conversation where we can engage, we're not going to see a lot of change. So, but our Equity Committee is looking at all different kinds of areas where we may not be serving all of our students equitably. We, we talked about looking at our special ed students, we talked about, you know, looking across gender lines. I can say, you know, what we're talking about with identity is understanding who you are, what you bring to the role, and how that impacts how you work with students. Long time ago, 15 years ago, when I did my dissertation research, I was looking at how students' theories of intelligence, whether they believed intelligence was a fixed quantity or whether it was something you can grow. We know now, there's been a lot more research on that. We know that students that believe that intelligence is something you can grow and develop are more successful in the face of change, pursue more challenging experiences, have greater resilience. And when I did that study and I looked, it was very clear in looking in classroom observations, survey data, the kinds of praise we were giving male and female students were very different. There was a lot more performance-based praise for female students, great job, neat work, that looks great, you got the right answer, you got it quickly. A lot more effort-based praise going to male students. Not surprisingly, male students more frequently subscribe to the, the belief that you could build intelligence. So again, not, without reflecting on identity, people aren't aware of how their own biases might be impacting the feedback they're giving or the performance of students. So it's about unpacking that, understand your own identity, who you are, what you bring to the role, what your experiences are, and how that shapes how we're, we're working with kids with that common goal in mind. So that's where we're starting with the identity. And again, race is a topic that is very difficult for people to talk about. So when you talk about that and you build skill and proficiency in talking about that, it's also easier to talk about some of these other categories.
And I'll also emphasize too, in terms of, right, we are, we're not at a place yet where we're having large community conversations about race yet. We have that through the BIPOC affinity space, through those who specifically identify as either Black Indigenous or a person of color. We have a little bit of those elements, the conversations through the book club. But in terms of the work we're doing with teachers and staff and even students, a lot of it is still really centered in the identity piece and recognizing that diversity, equity, and inclusion work, it goes beyond race, right? Like you mentioned, it encompasses all of these other aspects of identities that have historically been marginalized and furthest away from social justice.
I think that's really, just Caleb, he wrote just very thoughtful plan, and I appreciate that very much. And, and I'm a teacher, and I think it's great that you're starting with identity because we, my district, we've done not as intense training, but we've done training. And I remember the trainer was like, you know, you just want everyone to feel welcome at the table. And it just kind of hit, I don't know why, it was like a ha-ha moment and really made me start reflecting about things that I say and making sure like my classroom has a welcoming and, you know, just that I'm making sure that I'm trying to get everybody's needs. So I'm, I'm really, I appreciate that. Some things I've noted, and this is just me, is I work in the middle school, and I think it, it is important to have the teachers really feel comfortable first because I'm seeing at least kids, they're, they're kind of making fun of this stuff, like, oh, you're sexist, oh, you're racist, oh, you're, you're, you know, they're using these isms and joking and, and, and I can't even tell you what else they're joking about. And they're like, oh, it's okay, he gave me the pass. And I'm like, oh, my God.
Yeah.
And I'm like, I don't know how to handle this. And so I'm, I think it is important to have teachers more solid before you start talking. That's my personal opinion. We could talk offline, that's what I should say, with some of the thing, these things. So I do think that's important. The other thing to what Lisa was saying, and this is again, just my opinion, that it is, I agree, it's hard to talk about race in the times that I've leaned into it. I've had very gracious, you know, like good conversations with friends of color, and then the times that I've actually been, really felt like people were aggressive, were other white people, like you should think this, and you're this, and you're that, because you're not, you know, how could you ask that question? And I'm just like, I don't think, like, and I, and so I do think that that's, that's just my opinion. So I think that maybe, this is again, some of the political stuff is just because sometimes the way it's handled, it's like, you know, I, I posted a picture at Hobby Lobby and it was like, oh, my God, you know, like I didn't know, like sorry. You know, people are like screaming at me. And I think that's where it comes from. And I'm like, oh, my God, I'm not even like, get onto the table again.
I, no, I most certainly agree with you, which is again, why I think the, the approach of doing through identity is so important, right? Because there, a lot of the times, sometimes there are environments that could be perceived as aggressive and not saying the right thing or, you know, am I going to say the wrong thing? And, oh, is this racist? But really, being able to view this work from the perspective of identity and how our lived experiences contribute to the way in which we say, we talk, we see the world, and being able to unpack that and doing it in a way that is safe and collective, I think really will begin to establish a foundation to be able to have those harder conversations effectively. And I think in regards to your comments around the teachers needing the work first, most certainly, right? Which is why I think at the elementary level, specifically, we are really focusing here on the teachers first and haven't really dived into the student-facing aspect yet. In terms of the secondary level, specifically at the high school, I think it's a little bit different there, where I think that I view the work differently in terms developmentally. And I think that, yes, I think teachers need it, but I think that students at that level possess deep funds of knowledge and are inherently in ways extremely socially conscious, in ways that surpass that of our educators. And the group of students that I had the pleasure of training over the past six months, I could confidently say, I could hire as equity consultants for the, for districts and coaching probably teachers individually because of just how deep their levels of social consciousness go. And that, I think, has to go with the fact that it's a different generation. A younger generation that's more integrated with technology, that is more globally interconnected than that of teachers who are of the older generation. And so I think having a model where students are actually leaning, leading the learning for their teachers in that, in that aspect, at that age group, actually works better in terms of really flipping the power structure. If you're not familiar with Paulo Freire, I would highly recommend that you all read his work. I think you all as policymakers within the realm of education would benefit from reading his work. But he writes a book called Pedagogy of the Oppressed and numerous other books. But his learning philosophy is deeply rooted in deconstructing power within the scope of the classroom and how the teacher, a lot of the time, is the sole person of power and really depositing knowledge. But he really argues that we all have deep levels of funds of knowledge and to really break down the wall and barrier around the way power is constructed within the classroom and school spaces. And a lot of this design and this work is really rooted in Freudian thought and ideology. So I highly recommend you read his work if you haven't already. Thank you.
Email it to us.
It's lengthy, but yes. And I do think, again, the more that we have conversations and the more that we think about, you know, depoliticizing and what are our goals for the kids that we are working with and that are coming into our school system, and what are the goals that we have for them exiting? When we can come together to the table to talk about it, that's the first step.
Thank you, Caleb, very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Great to meet you all.
Have a good evening.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have the strategic planning update. Does that, is everybody good to keep plowing through, or does anybody need a, like, break? All right. So we had a packed agenda tonight. We have two people who are leaving the committee, so we crammed everything in for your last night, Sarah and Shannon.
Strategic planning, we have been working with a strategic planning committee all year, and we are working to develop our new long-range strategic plan that will go from 2023 through 2027. I had hoped we'd have some members of the committee today, but we stripped, we were originally planning to meet next Tuesday and we changed the timeline. So the, the strategic planning process, we have a number of teachers on the committee. We have representatives from special education, our general education, we have specialists, we have our director of special education, we have three parents and community members that serve on that committee. And we've started meeting back in October. The first step was to complete a SWOT analysis. The SWOT analysis is, is a really data-driven process. So that group on their first meeting got packets and packets and packets of data to look through. We looked at our, we've looked at our MCAS data, our achievement data, our financial data for the district. We've looked at survey data, the culture and climate survey data. We've looked at the curriculum review data. And what they were charged with was to go through all of that data and to develop a, basically a SWOT, which would identify what are things that come across clearly in the, in the data that are strengths of the district? What are we doing well? What are areas that are weaknesses? So things that we're not doing well? What are opportunities? So strengths and weaknesses are things within our control. Opportunities and threats are external. So what opportunities do we have that we might want to leverage in the next plan? And then what are threats? What are things that are beyond our control that we have to consider in developing our plans? It took us a couple of months to complete the SWOT because of all the data that we looked at. I included in your packet so you could see what the outcomes were. I won't go through them all in the interest of time, but you can take a I won't go through them all in the interest of time, but you can take a look at the SWOT. Again, everything that is listed in here is, is derived from, directly from a source of data that we provided to the group. The next phase of that was to look within each category and identify what are the big buckets? What do most of these data sources fit into in terms of core themes? We identified five, and then the committee took those five core buckets and developed them into goal statements. So we are proposing five new goals for the strategic plan. And then, once we developed the goals, we did a theory of action to test if we follow through and we're able to achieve all these goals, is it going to get us where we want to be at the end of the strategic plan? So there are five goals. One is around curriculum, and the goal statement is to provide an engaging differentiated curriculum that inspires students' love of learning, promotes high levels of growth and achievement, encourages exploration, and supports students in developing a broader worldview. We developed a goal for professional development because we recognize that when we have four other goals, we need to support all of our staff members with the skills and, and strategies they need to be able to successfully implement them. So the professional development goal is to provide opportunities for professional learning and growth that support educators in meeting the needs of the whole child in an inclusive and equitable community that inspires, and inspires educators to implement practices that encourage active student engagement and promote critical thinking. We have a goal around culture and environment, to cultivate a diverse, equitable, inclusive, and safe environment that nurtures the social, emotional, and behavioral health of students, staff, and families, promotes a strong sense of belonging, and advances social and civic responsibility. We have a goal around relationships with the town, to foster strong relationships between the Norfolk Public Schools, town departments, local businesses, and the community that promote productive partnerships, active family and community engagement, and instill competence and trust in our educational system. And then we have a goal around growth planning, because as we're going to talk about in a few minutes of the budget, the town and community is growing more quickly than we're able to sustain. So it's to collaborate with town departments and the community of Norfolk to establish a growth and funding plan that accommodates increasing student enrollment by expanding educational spaces, strengthening the pipeline for recruitment, and addressing the continued revenue shortfall. So we are proposing these as the five major goals for our next strategic plan. The next phase would be for us to use these goals and the SWOT analysis to develop the action steps under each. So what things do we need to put in place in order to achieve the goals? But before we move on to that next phase, I wanted to bring the committee the goals and request the committee consider the goals and approve the goals, because we won't begin action planning until we have approved goals to work towards. Does that make sense?
That makes perfect sense.
So I'll give you a chance to take a look and see if anybody has any questions.
I'll assume that the town departments are all on board with, would be on board.
Fostering relationships?
Yeah. I would assume, like, when you say, hey, let's meet once a month, they're going to be like, okay.
Yes, we have had conversations with the town. They are working with a master planner. This is, will be a shared goal. And when we're talking about action steps, monthly meetings, other things might fall under that in order to help us achieve that goal.
A shared goal with which department select board, or?
I, I think we're trying to reach all departments. So we have, and I'm anticipating some potential action steps, but we haven't got to that phase yet. But we have opportunities to work with the senior center on senior volunteers, bring people into the schools. We work closely with police and fire around safety plans. We would be working with the town select board around budget and revenue and long-term projections. So I think it's all town departments. And again, it's really about sustainability. We need to think about, with the growth coming, we don't have enough, I mean, you just saw the feasibility study, we don't have enough educational spaces. Revenue is not growing proportionally with the need. So it's really about how do we leverage all the town departments and build one unified plan for, for future growth.
Yeah, I'd say get on that.
We're trying. And again, all the goals came directly out of the SWOT. So they're aligned with the SWOT and what we've heard from parents in the community as well as our achievement data.
And just something nitpicky, why is it called threats? It's so aggressive, like, why not challenges?
It's a business model. It's a business model. Yeah. And a SWOT analysis is a pretty common strategic planning instrument. So threats are considered things you can't control that are outside of the purview of the school. So like the pandemic would have been a threat, the, you know, the revenue shortfall.
That was aggressive.
But I, I, I understand the language.
Just in education, you never say challenges or boundaries.
So we'd be doing a swat.
Swat. And then swat.
All right. So why don't we, if we're voting on this?
I, I'd like to have the committee vote to approve the goals because the strategic planning committee is now at a standstill. We, we, once we have approved goals, we'll get into the next phase, and we'll bring those action steps back to the committee to vote and approve to. But we, we need to have, have goals to move forward with, so.
Why don't we get a motion on the floor, and then we can talk all about the term, the threatening terminology?
I'll make a, never mind. I'll make a motion to approve the goals as written for the strategic plan update.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion?
I love the budget planning.
Let's get on that.
Definitely need to address that.
I think that's really important, and I'm so glad to see included here. I like the diverse, equitable, inclusive, safe environment, that's everyone's goal, like we just talked about. I think that developing a broader worldview is very important because we're such a global world now.
Right.
I do want to make sure there, because I also saw in the opportunities, instruction focused on world cultures versus specific popular holidays. I think that is great that we're learning about global cultures and celebrations around the world. I just do want to make sure that that is not saying we want to take away the HOD Halloween Parade. We're not doing Valentine's Day, like, some of the things that are very important traditions at the school. Do you mean more, we're still doing that, but we're also introducing, like, my kids came home and learned all about holy. And, you know, that was, they were really interested in that. I think HOD has always done a really good job of, I can't speak to Freeman because my kids are at HOD, of bringing home information about new holidays and new cultures.
I think that's what we're, what we're, we haven't developed the action steps yet, but this goal is speaking about the, the new social studies standards that are coming in, expanding perspectives when we're teaching factual history, looking at different viewpoints. So it's, it's bigger than that. But this isn't defining, this is just our long-term goal, the action steps come next. And again, looking at all kinds of other things that we're going to be presenting in the, in the Equity Report, findings and recommendations from that as well. But this is about, it's a bigger goal. It's about the broad, the broad worldview.
Okay.
And recognizing our kids are going to be competing in a, in a different economy and need that skill set.
I was happy to see that.
Any, any more further discussion? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll be coming with more.
All right. I'm going to try to go through some of these next things fairly quickly.
Talk like an auctioneer.
The wellness, wellness policy, by regulations, we have to have a wellness policy, and it's governed by the state, the membership. We have to have a wellness committee that has our nursing staff, our physical education teachers, our food service, our director of wellness. There's prescribed membership who, who has to serve on this. And by regulation, they have to regularly review and update it. The committee has been meeting, they, this is their proposed changes to the current wellness policy. We put it forward for a vote because they're really all incidental. Some of them are just things that are redundant, they're combining into one place. They updated the new legal references to manage changes in the federal law and regulations. A few other very minor changes. I would say there's, they're all incidental, there's nothing substantial. We will need the updated policy for our upcoming food service audit, so we brought it forward for you to review and consider.
There was something, oh, well, can I discuss what I was?
Do, well, should we make our motion?
Make your motion.
One. We're looking for a motion to approve the wellness policy update. That is exhibit six in your packet?
Oh, thank you.
So moved.
No, no, so moved.
Second. Any further discussion or questions?
Under the, I'm just trying to pull it up.
Yep.
And first of all, I mean, thanks to, I know Ms. Bernardino passed, and she was a great help. So thank you for the work on this. And Dot Pearl, amazing. So always thank you for all this hard work. There was something under the wellness that I have always brought up, and I'm wondering if now would be a, a good time to, I would like, I don't know if this is the proper protocol, but taken out, but it says, it was about recess. And it says recess shall not be taken away as punitive punishment. And I was, I've always strongly believed it should never be taken away as punishment. And I'm trying to find out exactly where it is, as well as, you know, especially now with the new.
This is strongly discouraged in the policy.
Strongly discouraged, but like, that's implying, like, there's still an opportunity for it to be taken away. And I think it goes.
There are times when, and I can speak to that, there are times where it's an appropriate consequence. If students have a fight during recess time, they may need the cool-down period. If there's a problem on the playground like that. But it is discouraged, we don't take it away for academic reasons, things like that. But there are, I think we don't want to fully prohibit it because there are times where it's necessary. If kids are struggling on the playground during the recess time, they may need to come in or have a cool-down or meet with an adult. So there are rare occasions where it's appropriate.
But under the new guidelines, don't, I mean, I thought you're not supposed to really, you're supposed to do like restorative justice, or you're supposed to do, you know, why would you?
That's for suspension. So the new student discipline law prohibits schools from suspending students without implementing alternative methods of discipline. There was a proposal that went forward at one time, a change to the law that prohibited taking recess for, as a consequence for behavior. That did not go forward, and it did not ever pass. So the language is consistent with what the state regulations are. I, I agree with you 100% that we shouldn't be doing it as a discipline on a routine basis, but I do feel there are times where it would be appropriate, you know, given unique circumstances. So the language of this policy is consistent with the language of the, the state regulations.
I mean, could we add something, like a caveat, like unless discouraged, unless, I don't know, this is, it's late, I'm not very cogent right now, but like unless extreme, like unless unique circumstances, unless absolutely necessary, does, am I like being crazy?
Our policies, our, just our.
Code of conduct defines all kinds of other consequences that would be.
Yeah, I think our code of conduct really does delineate specific responses to different situations. So I think like we followed that, you know what I mean? And again, I think it's seldomly used, but as Dr. Lardy said, there have been instances as like a safety issue, you know what I mean? With a student, and like I said, it's really important sometimes, students do need to be removed from the situation to be able to kind of recoup. And everything else goes into that you mentioned too, like, that's part of our practice, best practice, you know what I mean?
And I think when you think of it from a policy lens, a policy sets the big picture, it doesn't set the, the individual guidelines. The code of conduct does definitely define first, you know, classroom options, what should happen first, restorative conferences. So this is, if we totally prohibit it, the policy is generally broader, and then the code of conduct would be more prescriptive. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bullying report is, per our policy, I provide you a quarterly bullying report. The last quarter, which was February through April 3rd, we had one discipline report regarding bullying behavior at the each hall of day. It was investigated, it was more of a conflict between two students versus a bullying situation. So appropriate discipline and error measures were taken. There were two discipline issues at the Freeman. And again, neither of the incidents met the criteria for bullying, so action was taken per the code of conduct.
Any questions on that?
All right. The moment everyone's been waiting for. So as I think most of the committee is where, at least the budget subcommittee members, this budget, we had our budget public hearing last month, and the school committee voted to approve a budget that was a 4.7% increase over our last fiscal year. This year, the town is facing significant financial challenges. I have met with Justin Casonova-Davis, the new town administrator, as well as the policies, the budget subcommittee members met. The, the big driving forces for the town at this point are they, they are hit this year with a much higher assessment for the King Philip Regional Schools than they have in the past. That's a state-derived formula based on enrollment and a number of other conditions. The assessment for KP this year is 11.2%. It's about 450,000 or close to that over what the town expected the assessment to be. They have also budgeted in the past and typically received around $300,000 in prison mitigation money. That is down to 100,000 this year. They are facing a pretty significant health insurance increase for all, all town employees. The range that they could go up, it was from 3.5% to 10.5%. The health insurance adjustment is 10.5%. So that's a significant cost. There are eight more students attending Tri-County, and that was another 100,000 assessment beyond what they were expecting in budgeting. So as of last week, the town was 1.1 or close to 1.1 million dollars short of balancing the budget. The town administrator has been meeting with every department head. Sarah met with him earlier for the library. All departments are being asked to make further reductions in order for them to be able to balance the budget. They are proposing using some of the remaining ARPA funds to offset the deficit. Those are one-year, one-time funds, they're not recurring revenue. But some of the conditions they're expecting that are driving this shortfall are one-year situations. Others may, you know, again, we've talked about the long-term growth in the town, that's not going away. But the Tri-County assessment, the KP assessment, the, the hike, hike for health insurance, some of those are probably one-year situations. So they are recommending using some ARPA funds. They're also recommending using free cash. All departments are looking at, at Town Hall, they're cutting some positions. All departments are either not filling open vacant positions or making reductions. The town came to us and asked us if we could find another 102,000 of reductions to make to our budget to help close that 1.2 million, 1.1 million dollar shortfall. The budget subcommittee met, and we looked at that. As you know, our budget is already incredibly lean. It's very difficult to make further reductions. Everybody is feeling the pain of this budget cycle, so it is definitely shared across all town departments. We met and we looked. There were a couple of line items that we're considering recommending as further reductions. We have talked with the town. Now, there is a pretty strong possibility that additional revenue will come in over the summer to municipalities, whether that's in grant or, or state aid or, or additional appropriations through the budget process. And we have been, the budget subcommittee was assured that if additional revenue comes in at the fall town meeting, that that 60,000 of additional cuts we're recommending tonight will be the first priority for restorations, prior to filling other open positions or anything else on the town side. That that additional 60,000 we're being asked to cut would be the first priority for restoration. So what we looked at was where can we make reductions that are really more deferring costs, that we won't hit immediately, and that if we have restorations of funds, we could replenish as the year goes on? So at this point, we are recommending reducing the, an additional 1.0 math paraprofessional, that's $24,000. We are recommending taking 5,000 from each of the building expense lines, so from 5,000 from each hall of day, 5,000 from the Freeman Kennedy, and 5,000 from the Special Education Department expense lines. And we're also recommending reducing the substitute line by 21,000. That nets to about 60,095, Barry, is that correct?
It is.
Again, we are hoping that, that if additional revenue comes in, which I think there's a very strong chance it will, that we will restore those cuts. We can add back a paraprofessional staff member in September. It's much harder if we cut a teaching position, because we lose people and we can't then add a class, you know, later. But we could restore the paraprofessional substitute line, we, we could replenish, we would have sufficient funds to, to make it through most of the year. And, and again, the expenses will be deferred costs. If we don't see additional revenue, there is the potential, you know, that we will, you know, towards the end of the year, have to put a freeze on bringing substitutes in, potentially freeze the budget and, and other expenses. But, but we feel. Uh, but, but we feel this is, or at least, I'll let the budget subcommittee jump in. Uh, as painful as this is, we do feel it's important to collaborate with the town and go forward to town meeting with a balanced budget. If the school committee chose not to do that, then we would have to bring a different budget proposal to town meeting and recommend to the town where, which other departments are caught to, to fund that gap. Um, during COVID, you probably all remember, we were asked, because sixty percent of the funds go to education, education was asked to, to fund sixty percent of the deficit, we're not being asked that, we're looking at sixty thousand to help the one point one million shortfall. Um, I don't think anybody feels good about it, I, I know Madora and Lisa have one, will probably want to add. Um, but it would be my recommendation that we support the town in closing this gap with that sixty thousand. I don't think that any of us felt comfortable making the full hundred and two thousand of reductions. Um, but I think, given that we do have future budgets that we need to pass, that we need to be collaborative, and we also have a building project coming up, um, I think there is an additional funding. Um, so I, that would be my recommendation. Madora and Lisa, I don't know if you guys want to jump in?
I do. Um, I have given this tremendous amount of thought, I know Lisa has as well, and we met, um, for an extended period of time with Ingrid and Justin last week. Um, I think that what is challenging is the fact that, um, what we presented at four point seven percent is not a level services budget. Um, and I want to make sure that everyone is really abundantly aware of that. Um, I had hoped we might get a little more turnout from the public, but, um, I know they're all planning on watching it tomorrow. But, um, we, we were already not funding special educations, uh, teachers to support testing, which is a critical need in both school buildings right now. We were already not funding a math paraprofessional, we were already not funding library assistance. We already elected not to add the preschool classroom that we need. So we are going to have huge class sizes, um, or I'm sorry, the kindergarten classroom that we needed, huge class sizes at kindergarten, uh, big class sizes-
Third grade.
Third grade.
Incoming third, third.
Um, so we-
And we're moving a second grade teacher down to kindergarten to help with that enrollment, rather than moving up to third, so the big class sizes in third grade.
But we, but not, I mean, I think the kindergarten class size is estimated to be reaching-
Twenty, twenty-one.
The limit, I mean, that's, they're, they're not over, but we're half a student per classroom under our district limit there. So my frustration, and I understand the situation the town is in, and, and I've heard the phrase perfect storm, and I agree that it is, and I am sympathetic to that, um, my frustration is that the increased expenditures that the town is experiencing, particularly with respect to KP, and the additional tuitions to Tri-County, um, it's disingenuous to try to balance that educational overage on the back of the elementary system, um, which is already overstressed, overtaxed, and twofold. So, I am not thrilled with sixty thousand. Um, I am willing to do it because we have a history of working collaboratively with the town. I do believe, and I spoke with the Chair of the Select Board earlier today at length about this, and I know I spoke with Justin about it last week. Um, I do firmly believe that if additional revenue comes in in the fall, it will be restored as it was COVID reduction, um, year. But there is absolutely no way, um, I am going to condone any cuts above and beyond this. Um, and I am irritated and frustrated to be doing this as it is, so.
I think one of the things that we talked about in the budget presentation, and we'll talk with Advisory Board too, when you look at the budget history for the school, we did have those recession years, but if you take those out, just to open the doors the way we close is three percent, just to absorb staff, cost increases, supply chain, all of that, it's three percent. When we're looking, our per pupil cost is lower than almost all of our comparison communities, so we're looking at sixteen thousand dollars and change for, per student. When we look at growing enrollment, if you're bringing in ten to twenty more kids, that's a couple hundred thousand dollars in per pupil cost. That's two percent of the budget, so when you're looking at four, we're barely keeping up with enrollment, we're not growing. Um, so I think that's important, and, and as we've talked about, the town has engaged the Collins Center, they're working on a master plan because the revenue growth is not keeping up with the demand and the needs, and there has to be an alternative. And I, 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 I agree with Madora, there's a frustration there, but I do think the town has taken active steps to try to address that and relook at the revenue picture, uh, because that's going to be critical, um, in order for us to continue to provide the education that we are, uh, known for and, and committed to.
And I don't, I, I don't view this with the town as an, I, I want to be clear about that too, while I'm clearly fired up about this. Um, actually very calm. When I sound like this is when it's really bad.
No, I know, it's worse.
The town has been very open and transparent, I think with every department in town, about this. Where we are right now with our budget, because we run a lean budget every year, this is my fifth budget cycle, this is the tightest financial situation the town has been in since I began my tenure on the committee. Um, more challenging than COVID, you know, just, i- i- it's been extraordinarily challenging, but we have no room for error. We are already on a razor-thin margin as far as how we're budgeting to be at the four point seven percent, and it is, you know, a- anything above and beyond this, as, as Ingrid said, those are positions that we can't cut and then restore in November. We can't create a classroom in November, we can't, you know, and we-
Cut a specialist because, you know, I mean, you know, like-
Well, and, and, and-
You can't hire in August.
And it's just, it, it, it runs contrary to the purpose and the function of the school committee, which is to further the best interests of the district and the students. And so, yes, we one hundred percent are elected by the, you know, taxpaying voters of this town and appreciate their support. Um, I know I have for my, you know, now second term on the committee, but ultimately, our responsibility is to the district. And so, I, where we are, you know, at a point where we are at a tipping point, where if anything above and beyond this are, in my opinion, you know, positional cuts that cannot be restored easily midstream during an academic school year, I am not willing to support that.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, and I'm on board with that, I'm not happy with this additional cuts. I made my thoughts already about the cuts we had to do at four point seven very clear, um, particularly with the incoming third graders. These additional cuts, again, we want to be collaborators with the town, this is not the town trying to say, oh, schools don't matter, they're not doing that whatsoever. But this isn't just the perfect storm, because if you look at the graphs and you look at the charts that are in the presentations that we put out, we continue to drop below the state spending average, we continue to fall lower and lower and lower when it comes to spending per pupil for comparable towns, class sizes are growing, we're at the bottom of that chart now. I remember when I lived here, six years ago, we were somewhat in the middle and we just continued to fall. Um, so I understand this year is very challenging, but if we have a duty to the kids in this district first, I don't think, I think we're neglecting our duty if we make additional cuts. There, we, we can't make that number, I wish we could, but there's simply nothing in the budget, it's too lean. And it's been lean for so many years, and the conversation we had with the new town administrator, who's only, who hasn't even been here a year yet, um, it was a great dialogue, and I hope you continue to have more dialogues with him, or he comes, or the school committee as a whole can have a dialogue with him. And, you know, I know the planning board meetings are coming up too, and we're having the whole vision of Norfolk that we just have to really help people understand how lean this budget is, and the kids in this town deserve a funded education.
They absolutely do.
They deserve a level services budget at a minimum, and they're not getting it this year, so I'm all, I, I, I'm-
Like, we went from like a really nice Honda Pilot to a, I'm not gonna, you know, it's-
I mean, there's still things we're negotiating that have to be included in this.
Have a budget impact, yep. I think it's, as everybody said, I think that this, we need to address this year's situation, but I do think that continued advocacy, um, and, and supporting the master planning, because again, we cannot keep up with the growth when we're, I mean, our budgets need three percent, you've got a levy limit of two and a half percent tax increase to support all the increases in the budget, there's no industry or business revenue coming in that is not going to keep up with the growth needs. So, we do have to look long-term and, and develop a stronger plan for, um, and I know Justin's very committed to doing better financial forecasting and really looking at, um, how we're going to address this and the needs of the town going forward, so.
And I did, I mean, I want to be clear, Justin has been one hundred percent collaborative in, in trying to help us work this out. I, as I said earlier, I had a long conversation with Chairwoman Mecklenburg from the Select Board today, um, and, you know, kind of outlined for her my concerns, and, and, you know, I, I think that board in particular seems very supportive of, you know, trying to, um, trying to reach a balanced budget with all town departments with minimal long-term negative impact, um, so I'm-
I'm just worried because I saw in the strategic plan how below we are in ELA MCAS, and third grade is so critical for writing, I just, I don't know, this is the die, but it's like, can't we make the class sizes bigger in other upper grades that can handle being all now?
We did look at that, but we, in any other grade, we will be over the class size policy limit because of the numbers we have in the enrollment. So, third grade's the only, the grade, again, we were hoping to move the second grade teacher up, but if we don't and we only have seven, we're under the class size limit. Um, we have to move that second grade teacher down because we would be over the class size limit, um, in kindergarten, based on, we have a hundred and sixty-four kids coming in. Um, and even with that transfer, we're at, we're over twenty, we're not at the eighteen's that we used to have in kindergarten.
That was the only grade level.
What?
It was the only grade level.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for answering that, I wasn't sure to ask.
Do we know a timeline for the town, like a rough idea of when, how, when they're putting together the, their master plan and their strategic plan?
I, I don't have all the details, I know that they, we've had, all had initial meetings and they've been working with the Collins Center, I don't know when the report is expected to be issued, but I can find out.
There's a presentation coming up at some point.
Yeah, I just don't know if it's a final report or if it's an update, I'm not sure.
Either way, it's gonna take time, I mean-
I know, like that's-
Yeah, it's not going to be an instant fix, for sure. Um, but we're hoping that next year we won't be looking at all, all of the factors at the max.
That's what I'm thinking, well, how many years out, well, I mean, I know that we won't recover right away, and I understand, but how many years out does, are they projecting or are they planning for?
I, I'm not sure, I have to get some more information.
The forum is on April twenty-fifth, so that'll be important for everyone to attend.
And that's an, is, I don't know if that's a data gathering, or a progress update, I'm not sure.
It's a master plan visioning forum is what I was emailed about. Um, it's going to be here at seven PM, I can open the flyer, hold on.
But that, it doesn't sound like they're at the end stages, that's like, if they're still gathering input-
No, it's basically like a launch for the public, I think.
Yeah.
So it sounds like the cuts aren't going to be as bad from working with the town, but class sizes are big and, um, ELA scores are low.
We are reducing, we're recommending reducing a paraprofessional staff member, cutting supply lines that are already very, very tight, um, and, uh, reducing the subline, um, which is, is a gamble, if we have exceptional circumstances.
That's a big gamble. How can you do a sub-freeze, like you tell, tell people, like, don't come sit, don't, don't call and sit?
No, you have to cover with internal, internal staff, but that's disruptive, but we, again, we are really truly hoping that we, uh, are able to restore this revenue in the fall, and we did not want to cut a teaching or a specialist, there was nowhere else to go, we don't have any cushion in our budget. We've already made, and I will share with the town when we meet with the Advisory Board, to get to four point seven, we cut three hundred and eighty-five thousand out of the budget already. So we're over four, Barry, you could tell me better, but we're over four hundred thousand of reductions from level service now.
It's like a hundred and twenty basis points, it's-
What was that?
Five oh eight.
Five oh eight, five hundred and eight, from where we started. So that said, we, we need a motion to, from the committee, um, to approve the additional sixty thousand.
We can certainly discuss more, but can we get a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Second.
So I think we've discussed it at line, I know I have said my piece, um, does anybody else have any more to say or any questions?
No, just thank you, I know we said it last time, that it was challenging and I, I can't imagine revisiting it, so, thank you to everyone involved on that side.
Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Like, do I say no?
No, we have to be collaborative. I'm going to turn it over to Vicki, um, Vicki and Roxanne, uh, have been leading the principal search, so she wanted to provide an update for the committee.
So, um, Roxanne did a nice job kind of capturing, um, uh, in, in the memo, so I'm just going to highlight just a few things, just to see if there's any other, um, questions that I can answer, but we've engaged the Edward J. Collins, um, Junior Center for Public Management, um, out of the U of S Boston, to assist us with the search in, um, recognizing that this is a significant change, and, um, we really want to make sure that we kind of honor, um, the, kind of like the vision of HOD and, um, really find somebody that will be able to kind of continue the mission that has been put in place under Linda Balfour's leadership, and someone who's able to, uh, continue to take HOD forward, you know. So, um, the process so far has been, um, we have done some focus groups, um, this past week where we, um, tried to engage feedback from all stakeholders. Um, we, um, we had offered to our parents and families to come in to meet with, um, George Frost, who's our lead consultant. Um, we've also, um, had a forum for teachers and paraprofessionals, our custodial staff with him, our food service, you know, um, we really, our administrators met with him, and they were all asked the same five questions that were also sent out to start, uh, as a survey to everybody. And basically, um, the purpose of this, of, of all this like information gathering is that what, um, George Frost and he's also assistant at Dr. Ray Shuffler, um, um, are going to put together a profile of a candidate for us, given everybody's feedback. So kind of like, what are the key components that we're looking for a leader that, um, would really be able to take, um, take over at HOD? Um, the, we also, um, simultaneously have, um, formed a, um, a search committee which consists, uh, we have twelve members, we kind of expanded a little bit because we felt that it was really important to make sure that we have , um, voices represented from all, um, because they're from all stakeholders, so we have three teachers, we have two mental health staff, one paraprofessional, um, one executive assistant, um, two parents, um, and three administrators, which, um, consists of myself, Roxanne, and our assistant principal from HOD, Kristen Gaffoon. And, um, and Mr. Frost will be, will be, will be leaving the, um, um, the search committee. And we have our first meeting tomorrow, where we're going to review the profile, we're going to develop our questions, um, that we're going to ask our interviewers. And then, um, the following meeting, we'll be looking at, um, resumes that have been submitted, um, Mr. Frost has been collecting them. So, um, from what I heard, we've had a decent amount of submissions, and I think they're still coming in. Um, so hopefully we'll have a really rich pool of candidates to, for consideration. And then we have interviews set up, if you, if you look, um, further down, um, there's a timeline for the week of, um, April twenty-fifth. Um, and then we're hoping to be able to narrow down to about two or three candidates, bring, invite them in to, uh, to visit HOD, so the staff will have an opportunity to kind of meet them, ask questions. Um, and then hopefully we'll have recommendations for Dr. Lardy, um, of, uh, file recommendations, and we're hoping to have like, um, our hope is three candidates for her to consider. Um, so that's kind of, and then a decision would be made sometime in May. So that's kind of like the timeline, the process, um, we're going to try to keep it regularly updated, if there's any questions, like definitely reach out. Is there anything I can help clarify?
That's going to be a big job to fill.
I know, that's why we're, we're really being very, you know, making sure that everybody has an opportunity to really, like, capture, um, their, their thoughts about who like, who could possibly do that, you know, so.
Will there be some overlap with Principal Balfour?
And usually there's a transition, I'm sorry, uh, usually there's a transition period, which we will definitely have, um, where the, um, the two leaders have an opportunity to kind of meet, you know what I mean, and ask questions, and that's usually a common practice in all the districts.
Yeah, we'll definitely have some overlap and some time for training and passing information and making sure we're setting some up for success. And I think, at this point, Vicki, do you want to say, I, I, from what we're hearing, we have a pretty good candidate pool at this point. Um, I don't know if we talked about that at all.
I, I just said that we have, so, they have been, we have been trying to keep it really that, so all the resumes went to George Frost, and we're going to look at them at the same time with the committee, you know, um, so I-
But we have had a decent response, I guess is what I'm saying.
We did, we did, yeah, we have, like I said, we, we had like, um, I think thirteen so far, um, resumes that have been submitted, and, um, and like I said, they're still coming in like every day, we had like a couple more that came in today, I know, um.
And I know we had some people apply the wrong way, like it was school spring versus direct, so we have additional that we haven't received yet that have been directed to apply, you know, through the right channels.
Right, very right.
So I think we're going to have a good.
They, they just said that it's, it seems like it's a, it's a diverse pool of candidates, which is really, you know, it'd be great, so. But like I said, we're keeping it very, by the process, so we'll all get to see them next week, at the same time, yeah.
Any questions for Vicki?
I just had one quick one, how many, for the initial candidate, how many, do you have an idea of how many you want?
I just had one quick one. How many, for the initial candidate, how many, do you have an idea of how many you want on average? If you, you know, let's say you get fifteen in hypothetically, like.
When you, I can speak to that.
Interviewing?
Yeah, so what, what the consultants had said ten years ago, if you had an open principalship, um, it was great if you had thirty, thirty-two candidates. They're not seeing those numbers anymore for searches. Um, there's a critical shortage across the state. He, he felt that, you know, if we have fifteen to twenty, that's, that's on par with what most people are getting for these kinds of positions at this point. Um, and I think we'll be within that range. Now, if the committee does not find a candidate that is strong, that fits the needs, then we would be probably looking at reopening the search, um, you know, potentially putting an interim. We're not going to recommend hiring somebody that, that the committee and that the staff and that we don't all feel is the right fit for the district. Um, but I think at this point, he felt that what we were seeing in response is comparable to what you would expect at this time. We are not, you know, like I said back ten years ago, these were highly desirable positions and you had a lot of applicants. That's not true of administrative positions across the state at this point.
Thank you.
We have three nights dedicated. I don't know if you're asking how many. So we have three nights dedicated. If we need to extend more, then well.
Thank you, great. Great, thank you.
All right, I, I could suggest maybe we, um, do the committee reports and then go back to the exiting members.
What do you say, KP?
KP, KP has good news. Uh, KP, um, well, in conjunction with actually Dot Pearl, our wellness director, has just won a safety grant um, that will be split up between KP and the rest of the districts. And, um, it will be around training this summer about, um, threat assessment um, and helping the educators realize, um, potential threats in the school. And, um, so yeah, it's all good news. It was a very short meeting. We were out of there in like forty-five minutes.
It was one of your shortest on record, so we're trying to break it tonight.
Oh, Jen.
She put her time in on that committee, so.
Dot actually, I just, I, I should update the other slide for the advisory board, but she brought in just two new grants. We also got a girl's mental health grant that she wrote for additional support for students here. So, um, that's probably, the safety grant for, is for threat assessments for all four. I think that was close to sixty thousand. And then the other is, I, I think fifteen or so, but I'll confirm that.
And it was a really intense grant from what Mr. Zinni said.
Federal grants are very cumbersome.
So, thank you, Dot Pearl.
Policy. We have a whole bunch of things.
We do. I want to make it short and sweet because I don't have many words right now. Um, I'll do the quick part. Um, we met tonight, first read of, um, now that COVID has subsided and we're able to rent out space, we looked at the community use of school facilities and resources. We also looked at wellness, which we already went through. Um, we are suggesting, we're, we're gonna go back and suggest some, um, wording, nothing, um, nothing too major, but they increased room rates and then just added some language around penalties for non-payment and, um, space rental. So added some more language around that. Um, Ingrid's gonna revise for our next meeting and, um, we'll do another read of that. And that's the one that Sarah and I will do before.
Yeah.
So, um, the next few, I think we can do relatively quickly, uh, entrance age, we've looked at third reading. So we'll vote on that. And then the other five all had the same changes, um, just updates, um, to, um, the same paragraph of language. Um, so I think we voted last time in the same way for the, um.
So incidental changes to the, the next five?
So, so, yeah, entrance age is a separate vote, but the other five, we, um, we have our CPR compliance audit coming up. And there were changes to the federal law on definition of protected categories for harassment. And so we have to update every policy that touches that language and make sure it's compliant with the new federal regulations. So the other five are just updating that one. The protected class definition.
Yeah, and it was the same across each.
Each five, each of the five.
Those protected classes are the same.
I got it. So we're gonna do this in two motions. Can I get a motion to approve policy J E B entrance age, which is at its third reading?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? I have nothing to say. I've said it all about the entrance age, so.
We appreciate it very much.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes? Okay, um, second, I am looking, I will say it and then you can make your motion as you see fit. We are looking for a motion to approve the following five, uh, policy updates. G B A, G C F, I J, J B, J F B B, all of which are incidental language changes.
Yes, and protected classes.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Look at that. We flew through that. Uh, motion passes.
Short and sweet. I told you.
Okay, uh, new items, school partner renewal. Well, these are the fun. I have to figure out where I am in my packet though. We are entertaining the school partnership renewal for the King Philip. I'll just go into my.
Music Association.
The King Philip Music Association, a wonderful organization that, um, provides tons of opportunities for our budding young musicians, of which I have two. So I'm wholeheartedly in support of this. So we would be looking for a motion to renew the school partnership, um, with the King Philip Music Association.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item would be approving the school committee of public hearing minutes, I guess. Do we, I didn't realize we did that separately. Um, the, the minutes of the public hearing we had on the budget, um, on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, I thought those went together. So, um, can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the public hearing of March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the public hearing on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. To approve.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain since I was not here.
Okay, lovely. Um, then we will need a motion to, um, approve the school committee regular meeting minutes of March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three for the meeting that followed the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, wonderful.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, next school committee meeting is Tuesday, May ninth?
We need to change that because the town, we typically have that as the reorganization meeting after the election and the town postponed town meeting to May seventeenth.
We are sworn in and ousted on election night.
Right, but we usually, we usually don't, it's usually the same night. So we usually do it the week after, but we can do it any way you want to do it.
So do you just, so do you want to, so when do you want to move it to? I guess that's, because I was gonna say it wouldn't, whomever is gonna be filling these seats would already be sworn, like they could come.
Oh, I see, okay. I thought they were, I, I thought the town meeting certified the vote for all new offices.
They do, but you're sworn in before that as like.
But I don't think it's official till town meeting votes to accept the results of the election.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I got sworn in after town meeting.
I may have. I got sworn in, in the gym.
We did too. I did. I think you get sworn in, but I think the town meeting, the warrant article is to accept the results of the election. So I think it's technically after.
It would be only in like an emergent situation, would you, I understand completely. Okay, so let's move it to.
The twenty-second or twenty-third or twenty, that week?
Uh, is that the week before the long weekend? That, I could do that if it's.
Yeah, the before.
What day are we looking at? I'm sorry.
The twenty-third of May.
Well, budget season's over, so it can be any night, right Barry? Whenever we want to meet.
Twenty-fourth is better.
The twenty-fourth is better, actually, because Barry will do the quarterly budget report that night. So it's not over for him.
Really? So the twenty-fourth, sure, that sounds good.
Yeah, that.
I, my, my son's graduating from college.
Oh.
Thank you. I'll be in Baltimore.
It's a good place to be.
Can I ask you a question that I should have asked before?
Yeah.
Or, so was the, uh, the policies that we had to go through for the auto, there, those ones are done and one of the other ones?
Yeah, there's one more that we have to look at, but we're waiting for M A S C to, to get us the model.
So should we go earlier in that week? Or when are you leaving town, Vicki? Or are you just not gonna be here?
I'm leaving that the twenty-fourth, yeah.
You're leaving the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
So do you want? Can you do the twenty-third or no? That's a, or twenty-first? Or the twenty-second? Twenty-first is Sunday. I'm sorry.
Monday, the twenty-second?
Would that work?
Fine with me.
All right, Monday, the twenty-second. Oh, we can't, we have negotiations.
Oh, that's.
Oh, no, we could. Seven is five to seven.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Well, good. Oh, great. That's good, okay.
Do I have to be voted to continue on in negotiations after?
That, yes, but you don't have your president at that meeting. So we would do that.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute.
But would I, wouldn't I lose access to my school email address and all that stuff?
I'm just thinking about if we don't.
If we don't meet before. Yeah, that, that was my concern about the date when we were setting that date last time, was that it was.
Sorry.
So it would have to just be an emergency motion today. Can we just do a quick virtual, I mean, or we could just, I mean, we can set a virtual meeting.
We could set a virtual meeting.
Why don't we set a virtual meeting? Sarah, we're gonna table it instead of virtual meeting if we need to.
If needed, yeah.
Okay, so it's, we've all.
Monday, the twenty-second.
And I'm happy to report that we have all stuck it out with our one loyal member of the audience out there for this whole marathon meeting. So I just need a motion to adjourn. Oh, no, oh, I'm sorry. We had tabled item ten, item ten.
Yes, so it's the last meeting for two of our school committee members. Um, so Sarah Ward was elected to the Norfolk School Committee in the spring of twenty twenty. Um, and had, since that time has served as a KP representative for two years, correct Sarah? For two years, uh, as well as a member of the policy and the building subcommittees. Um, she's currently serving on the teacher negotiation subcommittee. Uh, Sarah's willingness to volunteer, her reliability, um, and dedication to supporting education and her thoughtful questions and suggestions have helped the district navigate some difficult times. So. One at a time. So we have a parting gift for Sarah.
Ooh, Sarah, that'll be perfect for your house outside.
This, um, out of the plastic instead of pulling it out. I, I, I'm not a plant person, so.
I feel like Sarah knows what to do.
And then we have Shannon Manesses, who has, um, was also elected to the committee in the spring of twenty twenty. Um, and has consistently served as first a member of the policy subcommittee and now as the chair of the policy subcommittee. Um, she be, Shannon began her term as we worked to navigate plans for reopening school following the COVID closures. Um, and she has modeled throughout her term the importance of listening to diverse opinions, gathering facts and making informed decisions. Uh, she supported just recently the district technology initiatives and our technology, um, district showcase, which was a huge success. We had three hundred, over three hundred and fifty people come, which was awesome. So. It's been wonderful working with both Shannon and Sarah. Um, they've challenged my thinking throughout and have helped to ensure that the district, that we make the best decisions in the interest of the childrens and families we serve. I've greatly appreciated their support inside over the past three years and I will miss working with both of you. So we have a little gift for Shannon as well.
The two people who chose to run for school committee in twenty twenty.
It's easy. Don't worry about it. The January conversation was very different.
Things changed between when you pulled the paper and then, yeah, that's true. I need a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? All right, wonderful. It's over.
Longer than our budget meeting.